It's okay, Bernie.
Hey, Rob.
Hello, Tim.
You doing okay?
I'm doing pretty well. A little bit of sleep.
Yeah.
How are you doing?
I'm okay. I'm okay. Not great. I'm okay.
Um, I am going to email all of you the presentation that Charlie has.
Great.
Is this something that you're going to share on the screen when he talks?
Yes, it's his PowerPoint. So I just.
We'll also have it by email, Anne Marie.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm gonna send it to you now by email as soon as I can find it and then.
That'd be great because it's easy for me to read if it's on screen. I mean, if it's, if I've got it rather than just trying to read it. My monitor is not very big. I may change that. I've got an old 11 inch thing.
I've got like three screens going.
Yeah, monitors aren't that expensive these days.
And for those listening, I am getting ready to download it and put it up on the attach it to the agenda and I'll already publish the agenda.
Okay, great. Thanks. Looks to me like Cliff is on to. Cliff said he can come back if we want to bring, if we want to do something else first, but otherwise.
Oh, no, we, I think we want to do Cliff first because once we
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Once we get into capital projects, there's no pulling us back.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay, so let's go ahead and bring Cliff in to the table.
Okay, hold on, I'm looking. There he is. He doesn't want to talk to us after Charlie's told us how much we're gonna have to spend.
This is always the worst day of budget season.
Hello, Cliff.
Not because of you, Cliff, because of, because.
Charlie.
Go both ways.
Cliff, you don't have to pull your hair out over it, you know?
I hope you weren't doing this yesterday when it was so beautiful outside.
It was gorgeous, yeah.
I had an outdoor meeting yesterday.
Oh, smart.
It was perfect.
Okay, so I think we're all here and it is 2:03 on March the 5th and we're here for continuation of our budget hearings. This and the first item on the agenda is some unfinished business from our last meeting, which was a discussion of the request by the Lewis Public Art, Lewis Art Committee. And Cliff is here to join us today, talk about your request for the $12,900 in the, in the 2022 budget. So Cliff, we, we talked about it. There were some questions about various things related to this. You want to walk us through your budget and how you, how you came up with this budget?
I, I was really more thinking about answering questions.
Well, I think one of the questions was relating to your web presence. That was a question that, yeah, I know you have had your own web presence. We talked about the possibility of your web presence being part of, being linked to the city's website as a possibility. I know you've had discussion about that in the past.
Yeah, I think we, I know we've, we've sort of gone over this each time in the last three years. Our webpage is 16 pages long right now and it changes because, you know, if we're gonna do an event, we post details about it. So there's much more of a I mean, it, what we're trying to, and we're also trying to promote it and linking to it all through the internet with, with Instagram and Facebook. So the thought was that because we're independent, we don't have any kind of way, we don't want to be part of a you know, more levels of, of control. We don't allow people to post on it like a feedback site. But we have to be able to respond rather quickly when an event happens. And so, for example, there's a coordinating between the, the, some of the times when we do public relations work, we get involved with the newspaper. So, so the day that article's coming out, you know, I'm talking to Nick, and the day that article's gonna get posted and sometimes it's posted only on the Facebook page for the paper, sometimes it's posted online, sometimes it's printed. You know, we have to go back and forth and essentially the, the money, to be honest with you, I, I know there was a question, I didn't, I didn't, I don't think I submitted the bills for that last year, actually. So I mean, I, so it's not so much a monetary thing, it's just a question of, 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 you know, right, I look at it as like a support site and not an official site. I could put it's not official if you think that, that, that would help. But it, we, we do need to be a lot more responsive. We have interactive features and you know, and all of the editing we do, so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't come down to any extra expense for the city. And I mean, that, you know, we're gonna post reviews, we're gonna have comments up there when a piece of art comes in. All this stuff is ongoing, so it's really designed to be kind of a browse-through site with lots of pictures and takes up a lot of space. And, you know, we've been doing it that way now for, this is the third year.
Okay, great. Questions from the table about that? Are there any costs associated with this, Cliff?
Well, there is a cost. I mean, I, I pay for the site. It's, I mean, it's probably by the time I pay for the domain and the site and everything else, it's probably like $350 a year.
Okay. In your budget request, who had requested $1,000 for the web presence?
You know, for the first two years, we have we have submitted a one, our, our, our entire budget was under one, one call, it was miscellaneous. Nothing was broken out.
Right.
Then Mr. Reardon got into it last year and the, the individual breakouts that I see on this, now that I've seen it, you know, they're close, but that's, that would be, that would be probably money that, no, that it's not gonna cost $1,000 to do it now that I know how, how I'm doing it and what it's costing me. Much, much more like 500 bucks will cover it.
Okay. All right.
Hey, no, I like the beard.
It's coming off as soon as it gets warm.
As, as you know, from, from my comments in the past, I, I don't, I don't like offshoot websites that are not official websites to the city that are doing official things of the city. I have FOIA issues with it and stuff like that. And this will be true, it, it's not the, the Public Art Committee, it would be true of any committee or commission. I'd have the same concern. Have you explored with the city whether what you're trying to do on this standalone website can be, can be done on, on, on the city platform?
I did, very much so in the very beginning, and then you have changed your platform in between since the first time I actually did this. I mean, I don't know if you're gonna allow, the city would allow me to go in and edit a site. I certainly don't want to be in a, if the situation, if the situation is the city wants to put stuff up, it's gotta go to somebody else that's gonna form it, write it, and then put it back together and then post it. That would be pretty cumbersome for us if it, at the same time, I'm, if, in terms of managing the site, because I, I use that Squarespace thing. I'm, I'm not very good, but, but it's passable and I can, I mean, I know the formats and know how to change things. And I really have a very particular idea of how it should look. I mean, we're an art site, we have to look cool. I mean, not that your site isn't cool, but we want to try to be, you know, we need to have energy and, and, and bright stuff. And so the actual editing, I mean, I don't feel like I could just turn this over to someone and say, here, put this up on the site and we, we would get anything nearly as good as we have, even though what we have is pretty mediocre. So it becomes a question of timeliness, of editing, of, of artwork, of graphic design. All of those things are how, that are things that are affecting our site. I don't know whether, if the city website would allow us to do all that stuff, we, you know, we can direct it there, it doesn't matter. We do, we do have a lot of, we have history now, our, our LewisPublicArts.org, you know, is followed all around the lot. So if we did go back to use the city, it would just probably be a we don't want to try to repopulate our address, we'd probably forward it.
Yeah, my guess is you could, if, if this was feasible, they, they could just redirect people to, you know, to the city site. But Anne Marie, question for you. Can, I guess two things. First, can the city site host what Cliff is talking about? And second, can Cliff be given some kind of privilege to, to, to do the things he's talking about if it is on the city website?
So, under the site administration, we can set up permissions for people to only access portions of the website. You know, we have, some of our staff in City Hall have access to posts in certain areas, but not across the full platform. So it, it could be, it could definitely be done. We don't have a limit on how many pages we can, you know, how many pages deep we can go. I, I think Cliff, so, so the answer is yes, I think we could. I think to Cliff's point, it, it would be a, a lot of work for you to migrate from what you have to what the city has.
Would we be meeting the need if we provided a link to the, to Cliff's existing website on the city's site and go route that way?
That's the easiest way to do it.
There's no reason we can't do that.
Do we?
Yeah.
We have to be careful about the interface because, I mean, you know, you know, you don't necessarily want you know, things going in two directions. On your site, you have to be a lot more careful than we do because we don't do anything as do.
But, but see that's
We're just showing pace.
Yeah, but see that's, well, and maybe that's fine, but that, that's the problem, Cliff. If, if, if an official committee of the city of Lewis,
Right.
you are acting as a government agent. And so you're subject to, you, you, your site is subject to all the same legal stuff that the city's site is subject to. So I mean, it, it, it sounds like there might be not as much of a problem if, if it's not an interactive site, you know, if you can't, if, if people aren't allowed to post. But, you know, if we got a FOIA request for, you know, all the records of the city on X and it, it involves, say, an art installation, my, my worry is that we wouldn't be able to respond to that request from your site. I, I mean, I'm not a techy, I don't know.
Can I respond to that before you do, Cliff?
I think there's some confusion, but go ahead, go ahead, Anne Marie.
Just for the, the sake of kind of what we deal with in terms of FOIA, more likely that we would get a FOIA request for email correspondence that members of the, the committee are involved in. And the only the only board commission committee of the city that has city email accounts is the planning commission. So in that case, we do go to, you know, if we got something and we want it, somebody wants to see Cliff's emails on public art with the consultant that we've hired, you know, we would have to go to Cliff and say, Cliff, you need to provide this. And so there's already some of that happening with personal email accounts.
Okay, so you, so you think the FOIA risk is, is pretty minimal?
I'm less concerned about the FOIA risk, yeah.
Okay, good, good.
And the other thing, Bonnie, basically, we don't, you know, like, like on Facebook, we don't let people post on our page because we don't want to be part of that. We, we, I think you, what you explained when we first started doing this and we were talking, we, we set it up based on what, what you're saying. It's, to us, it's, it's just like an ad in the newspaper. This, our information is only going out one way.
Okay, that, that actually makes me feel much, much better. So thank you very much for clarifying it. What, what I suggest we do is create, if we don't already have it, create a page for, for Cliff's committee on the city website. And to Andrew's point, you know, say, for more information, see whatever Cliff's site.
You know, the other thing that the committee tends to get are the submissions, once you, once there's serious submissions, Cliff, right, they typically come in like a PDF format or a PowerPoint format. So you can, if, if that's the other issue, you could make those available, maybe, if you don't want it to flow.
That's, that's, it's possible. I feel like that it depends, some artists are very nervous about having their submissions, once they're rejected, be out there on the public that they have been seen and rejected, that somebody didn't like this piece. So until we get like finalists or something like that, we haven't necessarily, I mean, we have made them available on the Far Path, I mean, not on the Far Path site, on the, on the Facebook page. So, I mean, that's something we should check out. But I mean, I, I don't see anything wrong with saying what it is. The problem is that if the city's gonna post it, how, how, how good is, how good is the registration gonna be? Is the artist gonna get a really good image? Because once that goes out, that's all artists care about. And then they get involved with, well, who took that picture of that piece of art? And did they get the appropriate credit? So, but I, if you send them to our site and we have that stuff, you know, the city.
Now has just told me, and I verified, we, we have a public art committee page and a link to the site on it. So.
So it's there already.
Okay, well, it, this is, like I said, this has been very helpful for my FOIA concerns. As long as, essentially, this is a site that's a mirror, right? I mean, it, it doesn't, you can't interact with it. And Cliff, you're the only person who can post to it, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, really, I mean, I'm hosting it for the city, but yeah, I, I mean, I, I am the person that hosts it. I went to, I registered the site, LewisPublicArts.org. But it's had to be, you know, so that is, and that's the only person, I think Heidi has, I have a, I have a backup. I think Heidi has the, has the rights to get on that site too. That would get passed.
Heidi's your art consultant, correct?
No, Heidi.
Heidi is, Heidi is, okay. I know who Heidi is.
I have a backup for everything we do. Barry's usually the backup, but for the internet stuff, it's Heidi.
Okay, good. All right.
Back to the budget. If I understood you correctly, you need, you actually need $350, not $1,000?
Well.
I think you said.
Slide number 5281. I'd have to look that up.
So you're, but I think you said at some point, 500 would cover, would cover it. Is that correct, Cliff?
And if I don't spend it, you get it back.
That's right.
And that's the way we've always been with you guys. We, we're, we're not the, we're just a bad kind of committee for doing what we have to do here because, you know, we don't know, we just, we just don't know. And we're, you're, right now, we're talking about not the art that we're trying to get done for this year, we're talking, we're talking about the budget for a year from now. And it, it makes it very complicated sometimes. I'm sorry.
Which gets to the question about, you, you, you put in your budget, the Art for '22 Art Show, $10,000. And basically, you're you know, that's, you're thinking about art that would, would be made public in the summer of '22, correct, Cliff?
That's correct.
Okay. And what you're anticipating is the art that we already approved for this year is being paid for out of this year's, out of '21's budget?
Right. And the support for that is all, it's fully subscribed and we have enough donors to cover the $4,000 that we put up to our portion of the way we looked at it. We looked at the, we, you know, we, we look at the the fact that the community supports this is, is kind of a, a, a big and important deal. But it also makes sense that, that, you know, you know, we, we have never, we've never used our whole budget, we've always given you money back. We don't, we're not the kind of committee that spends money frivolously. And actually, we're the kind of committee that forgets to send in our bills. So.
All right. And so I, I think you're, again, you're talking about 4,000 is what you really need for the budget for public art for next year. Because you're planning on raising six, right?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not, no, 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 this is.
So what are you doing?
Let me, let me go back and tell you why the $10,000 on there.
Okay, please.
Because I wanted to have this subject. I wanted to have this debate or with this question. And the only way I can get the question is to ask for the money first.
Okay.
We, we have had several, we actually are gonna need support. And, and we have, we have several options at play right now. But one of the things we ran into this year is we had four or five really nice small pieces that would have been really great as a grouping, not so much like right on top of each other, but have like a little sculpture event. And it may not have been in the California Park, it could have been in another park, but we could have had four or five sculptures because, because we were, we, you know, they were all liked enormously and we had a hard time judging which one to go for. Now, so the idea is why couldn't we, instead of, you know, if we keep our budget low per person, what, what we want to try to do is, is have more than one piece. Now, that's gonna take a lot more coordinating. It's gonna take, you know, a bigger support amount of money because I do look at you guys as being the seed money for any project that we do. And maybe the alternative is to try and do this every other year. So the, the reason that we asked for the extra money was to say, you know, what do you think of this idea? You know, should, can we have a little Lewis? Maybe we should make it every other year, Lewis Biennial. And you could have that way, if it's gonna cost more money than you're comfortable, we could budget for that. If it were, if it were me, my thinking in the background is to go for two years, we got a budget $10,000 for it this year and $10,000 for it yet next year, as opposed to budgeting $20,000 and knowing that we've gone like too far. So that was a discussion that I wanted to bring up to you and see what you thought about that idea.
Let me, let me ask the question to the, to the group as well. So with these public art pieces and the, in coordination with the Parks and Rec Committee, for example, would we envision potentially getting more events that you could center then around? So obviously, it's public art, so day to day, it's available to the folks in and around Lewis. But could we, as then a city, monetize that by having weddings, birthdays, et cetera, centered around these sculptures? Is there, is that a, is that a, is there a market for that, Cliff?
Um, I'm not sure. And I, I don't know. I think that as far as monetizing what we do, I know Lewis spends money with, for public relations sometimes for, and for, for other events. Well, I'm thinking about the BPW thing, but
Good dig, Cliff. Good dig.
All right. Well, I was getting a no down here from Bonnie. She started it. All right. So the point is, we have had already on this particular piece that's coming in, we've had three major articles in the newspaper, we've had a TV shot. We actually have a bit of a vibe, as positive vibe about, even though we've done almost nothing accomplished. But even, but starting with the Freeman, having this discussion, I think it's been, there shows a bit of a vitality in Lewis in the way that they look at art. And I think, you know, for the amount of money that, that we're spending, I think it's a, I think we're, I think you're getting your money's worth. The second part is that we anticipate like having every Wednesday or every other Wednesday when this piece comes in, we're gonna have an interpreter there. This should be in the paper. Somebody can come down, we're gonna talk about the piece of art. This is particularly ugly today, you know, last week it was okay, but now it's disgusting. You know, let's see what, what do you think? And have these discussions. And I think that that will be a way of gathering people. I don't know whether it's monetizing because we're not charging admission. But we want to involve the community. And the, and the, and ultimately, another thing that you'll come into on the budget is, is, is a meeting expense. Now, we have been trying for a year to get a meeting together with Art and Bloom. And I finally found a, a really nice lady named Sue. What?
Sue Crawford?
Yeah, she's, I think, yeah, I think that's who it is. And she's on the, she's on, and she feels that it would be really useful. So what we wanted to do, remember the first year we had that, we had the speakers and everything, and that didn't go so well. And this time, we want to coordinate something, push it through an Art and Bloom thing and in the fall, maybe down by the park. But try to get a real community get-together meeting, let's talk about this and the nature of art, you know, if you guys want to put in a piece of sculpture, why is it gonna go here? And it's just the best piece that could ever go here and all this kind of stuff and have that dialogue. That's where we're trying to get to. It's been two and a half years now and we, we haven't. But we're getting close. I, I feel like we're gonna get this done this year. And at the end of that year, we will probably know Lewis really wants to pursue this little experiment seriously or not. So now backing up to the $10,000. I'm glad you saw it. Unless you guys feel like, I mean, I, I'm not getting a whole lot of feedback on the, on the hyper positive side. Rob, Rob has a nice smile. Rob has a nice smile. So what do you think? Do you think it's worth spending a few more bucks?
I think, I think what you've done so far is very interesting and has generated a good discussion point within the community. The back of the building over on Schley Avenue has generated a lot of discussion over the course. Obviously, there was, there was an impact initially. It's died down now. I expect as people get out and about this spring, the discussion point will pick back up.
Well, we would anticipate replacing that sculpture next, after two years. We don't want to, we don't want.
But, you know, I think there's still more discussion to get out of it because it was installed late in the summer.
Oh, yeah.
And I think there's still not more to get out of it in the spring and over the course of the summer.
Okay, we should have a meeting over, we should probably have a get together over in front of that, too. I forgot about that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
If I'm persuaded about, I mean, very much what you said is, I guess, as a public relations and sort of an awareness exercise of what's good and different about Lewis. So, you know, you obviously know I'm supportive of the arts and both. And the other point is, you know, we do pay for some of the performing arts to come into some of our parks, which is an art form. The other thing I will bring up that has been raised previously, which, you know, the, I know you've talked about your mission before, but the idea that we should also be focusing on local artists and how that can be, you know, sort of incorporated into what the Public Arts Committee is doing. So I don't know if you want to, you know, sort of make a comment or, you know, around that.
Well, that's a slippery slope. The, as you know, the mural project was open to all kinds of people. Our primarily, primary respondents were local Delawarean, followed by Philadelphia and then Washington DC. So, I mean, I consider those local artists. What, if you're talking about, you know, bringing Fred out of retirement and have him put on an art show for us? I mean, I like that stuff. I do, and I do, I do like the, I mean, I'm always interested in seeing, you know, new artists from my friends that make art here in town, and Steve Rogers and Barbara. And I just, I'm just not sure that we, we have so limited responses, so much limited resources and such a limited opportunity to have an effect. If we try to spread out too wide a net, we end up becoming mushy and have no real effect. And it's sort of like, generally, if you have, you compromise, you know, you have two good ideas. And sometimes when you compromise them, you'd get the worst of both ideas. We have the plein air festival. I mean, that's really kind of fun. And, you know, and that's kind of a serious artist thing. We have art in the park. There was a painting that, that, that the people that, I think that was Art and Bloom put, where they did an art in the park where people came and painted. We want to be the people that actually give those artists something to think about different when they work. We see our role as not, I do not see our role as supporting local artists, per se. I have nothing against them if they make great art. But I do feel that our, our thing is we want to challenge and we want to elevate. And so it's not like we have a big budget or a lot of things we can do. We can only do one little thing a year. And if I'm going to do one little thing a year and go, I'll just work, I don't want to, I don't want to do it showing something that even though it's nice and I like, everybody should be making art, it's very therapeutic. It's not going to challenge me to the point where I might become a different person afterwards. And that's, that's the point of good art now. You know, and it doesn't have to be oddball art. I relate to Bonnie when she said she went, saw, when you came to our meeting, which was really fun. And then you saw that statue, I believe it was at the Air Force Academy or somewhere, or an Air Force guy for some reason. And it's really motivated you, it moved you, it changed you. Because you were like struck by how regal the guy was or how strong the image was. And, I mean, all of that is good. So I'm not trying to say it, but we don't have a lot of options. So to be honest with you, from a very greedy standpoint, I mean, I can, I can do crits. And I mean, I've done crits at colleges and I've done crits with art students at art schools. I don't want to do that here. I don't really think that's our role. That was an honest answer, I'm sorry.
Right. Any other questions for Cliff?
Well, I'll just, I'll just make the point I always make, which is, you know, we started out at $3,000. Now we're taking, looking at $10,000. And I just don't think this is an appropriate use of tax money. Don't worry about it, Cliff, I won't be on council. So don't worry about it. It's not like I'm going to vote against.
Just let me say, let me say one thing. I'm a real fiscal conservative, and I'm glad you're on city council doing that part. That part. But I ask this money because if the opportunity came and something really cool happened, we have the opportunity to do it. If that opportunity doesn't show up, we don't spend our money. We have returned 50% of our budget to you every year we've been open. So we're asking for the approval. We don't know what's going to happen. That's why I'll have this thing all lined up and locked down. But it would be nice if we had that ability. Because we are, you know, in our, in the kind of things we're trying to do, we're getting these things done for around $6,000. They're really more like a $12,000, $15,000 projects. And it's a bit of a struggle, but we're getting it done. And I just would, if the more, if more money was available, I'm not going to spend it frivolously. I'll give it back to you.
Well, Cliff, how about, how about as a compromise? How about we keep this at a low budget figure? And then if something truly extraordinary comes up, you can always go to council and ask for the money.
Bonnie, have you ever gone to city council?
Way too often.
Have you ever gone to city council to ask for something? What, are you crazy?
We do entertain budget amendments, anyway.
Okay, pretty funny.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's funny. I think it's actually a reasonable solution. As opposed to what you're saying, Cliff, which is, give us, give us a pot of money and, you know, we'll, maybe we'll use it, maybe we won't. I guess I'm looking at it the other way around, which is, why would we put out a pot of money without knowing what we're getting, so?
Okay, here's the practical side, Bonnie, is if we get an opportunity, it may last 10 days. You guys can't even get us on your schedule for six weeks. And then you only ask questions that we have to ask. And so, I mean, the process is really, it makes sense for building a development. It's really hard, you can't. But if the, if the project, if the money was in the budget, we weren't going to ask anything extraordinary, we're still going to bring it to you. But you have the ability to say yes, and we can go.
Mayor, I'm joining this discussion, but we have a lot of capital.
I agree, I was just about to cut it off. Thanks, Rob. So Cliff, I think, I appreciate you're taking time to be with us today.
Whatever you decide, I love you all.
Cliff, we love you, too.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Okay, so while, maybe while Anne Marie's queuing up the information from GMB, Wondering, do you want to go over the changes we did between drafts? The last draft and this, okay? I think we all have a copy of it, but just for those benefit of the others who are watching.
Can you give us page numbers, Sue Ellen, Lori?
I will. So let's first look at the sheet that says changes in budget draft number four. That is attached to today's agenda as well as the graph four. So the first line that we talked about changing last time is on page three. It is account 10410000. It's the gross receipt rental tax. We had looked at where we were trending at last budget meeting and thought that we could increase this budget line $30,000 to be in a comfortable range. So that's what this change does, it increases.
Hello, Rain. I know last month, last weekend, last week, you gave us an update in terms of what had come in. Is there more, has there more been received in this past week?
Yes, there has been. Let me try to get to the current number. So as of today, 563,000 has been collected.
163,000, okay, thank you.
The next line that we looked at was also on page three, business licenses. It's account 10420. This account was also trending higher. And so we felt comfortable to raise this an additional $5,000. 55.
Is there an explanation why that is running higher?
We had actually adjusted it down because of the pandemic concern. So it's still running less than we initially thought it would be, but it's higher than our more conservative pandemic projection.
Right, in fiscal year '20, we collected almost $276,000.
Right.
255 was reasonable. Give over the next adjustment that we made, which was to prior year reserves to discuss the changes in the expenditures. Once I discuss those, then the prior year reserves number will make sense. Go to page 13. Is the planning departmental budget. It was discussed to reduce the consulting line, which is asked for about 5266. And so we reduced that by $10,000. It was at 25, it's now going to be at 15. And then we looked at creating a budget for the planning commission consulting, which is on page 15. And it's 105505266. So this has not been budgeted previously, so we created a budget of 25,000 for consulting under the planning commission. So when you look at the changes in expenditures and you look at the changes in revenues, the net effect is a reduction to prior year reserves of $20,000. We were able to reduce that amount from 430,970 to meaning 410,970 to balance the budget.
Right, great. Any questions for Ellen, Lori? Okay, thank you very much, Ellen, Lori. All right, Anne Marie, are we ready to go?
As far as I know, I'm going to kick it over to Charlie.
Okay.
The gloom and doom man. Are you, are you able to share?
Yeah.
Hey, Charlie.
Hey.
This is not, Charlie's presentation isn't tied to any one page in the budget, is it?
Yeah. As we go through, we can, not everything is in the budget. Most of what he discusses would end up being added to the transfer tax budget. So as we go through, we can talk about what's in the budget after Charlie gets his overview. And we can let you know if it's in the current draft or not, and if so, what page.
Thank you.
All right, Charlie, the floor is yours.
Amber, do we, since we do have people on the line from the public that may be attending for the first time, Amber, do you just, can you give a 10,000 foot view on what just that means in terms of transfer tax budget, et cetera? Some folks just may not know.
Sure, so we have several funds. The majority of the city funds are part of the general fund. So that is where our departmental operations, you know, over, I don't know, 6.5 million. And I always talk in round numbers, so it's different than that. Yeah, 6.6 million dollars is in the general fund budget. So that's, that's the majority of what we spend. Then we have our MSA fund, which that is, we're anticipating about $116,000 from the state. The state gives municipal street aid, which is MSA funds, to each municipality based on a formula that relates to population and miles of road, linear miles of roads that they maintain. And that money has to be used for street expenses. So some of the capital things, some of the smaller capital things, we will put in that. Like, for instance, we had talked about paying for the streets we were with municipal street aid. And then we have a general capital projects account, which is a capital, for capital projects. And we use that primarily for vehicles and those types of purchases. But again, it's open for any, any capital purchase. And then we have an account for the transfer tax. So from every real estate transaction that happens in the city limit, the city gets one and a half percent. And if a property sells and within 18 months builds, then we get one and a half percent of the value of the building that gets paid. That all goes into the transfer tax fund. And that, in this current housing boom time, is actually doing very well. And that is where we budget the majority of our capital funds.
Thanks, Amber.
Capital project, sorry.
All right. Okay, Charlie.
Okay. Well, I'm going to borrow a line from Cliff Diver and just say that, no matter what happens today, I love you all.
Good, thanks.
So, yeah, a lot of these projects, city councils are already, you know, we've already presented to city council in previous capital committee meetings. So I'm going to go through and in a summary type fashion. But if you have any, you know, other detailed questions, we can certainly dig into any one of the projects. It looks like there's eight projects, one of which could possibly be broken down into three different phases. So that's what I plan on, plan on doing today. Is to go through those. We've got projects that are in the bid phase. And we've got some projects that are in other phases, primarily either preliminary schematic design or in design. We can talk about those as we go. So I wanted to take the projects that are currently in the bid phase because they're certainly more likely to be happening earlier in FY '21, '22. Everybody's aware of the tennis pickleball basketball court improvements project. We did put that project out for bid. The bids were received on February 2nd. We haven't made our recommendation to council yet because there were a couple alternates that we wanted to run by the city, which involved a site trip down to Ocean City to look at their courts. And every time we tried to schedule it, it was either snowing or freezing cold. But we finally got that in. So we're pretty much ready to make our presentation or our recommendation to city council. If you remember, the base bid that we talked about for the tennis court rehab included a milling overlay with a new asphalt surface. And that base bid amount came in at 143,960. And that included all the things that we talked about during all those presentations before about color coding the courts, putting the pickleball courts and the tennis courts and the basketball court lines on the courts, replacing the fence, replacing the fence fabric, putting windscreen up, and making some other minor improvements to the whole, to the whole area. And then we looked into also what's known as the premier rubber coat surface. And this is why we had to go to Ocean City because all of their recreational courts are now utilizing this premier rubber coat surface, which is just a surface that, it's a rubber, like quarter inch thick surface that's laid on top of the existing asphalt. The existing asphalt, if there are any cracks, the cracks are filled and repaired in that way. And then this is laid on top of that and then glued down on the edges of the surface. And it's a rubber coat surface. The one nice thing about this is that it carries a 25 year warranty as long as you color coat. it carries a twenty-five-year warranty as long as you color coat every five to seven years, which is pretty much in line with what the city's been doing out at the tennis courts. Um, and, and that's what it should be anyway. That bid alternate price came in at one fifty-eight, two sixty. Um, we put a bid alternate two out there, um, which included the base bid amount of one forty-three nine-sixty, but eliminating the fence post replacement. And just replacing the, the fabric of the fence, um, which eliminated some troublesome work on, you know, in terms of removing the existing posts. So when we, when we asked for that price, we had got like a fifteen thousand dollar credit. So that alternate price came in at one twenty-eight, one fifteen. And this is still based on the milling overlay with the new asphalt surface. Um, and then, Emery, I don't think I've even told you this yet, but we did check in with, um, the low bidder, ATC Corporation, American Tennis Corporation. And they said they would honor the same reduction of, um, little over fifteen thousand dollars if we were to remove the fence posts uh, from the alternate one premier rubber coat surface. So that premier rubber coat surface uh, would come in without the fence posts at one forty-two, four fifteen, which is gonna be GMB's recommendation to city council is to go with the premier system at a hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and fifteen to American Tennis Corporation. And there'll be fourteen thousand dollars of engineering construction phase fees estimate on top of that. Recall that there's a seventy-three thousand five hundred, um, match, fifty-fifty matching grant that the city has already procured um, that would go towards paying for this project.
Charlie, how does the, uh, how do the balls bounce on the rubber different from the asphalt?
Yeah, very, very good question. It, it's, it's slightly different. It's, um, you know, because it's a different surface. You know, they certainly bounce. Some people say it's not quite as fast as, say, a asphalt court. It's, you know, I'm no expert, but it's not as slow as a clay court, but it's not quite as fast as an asphalt court. But I would say it's closer to the asphalt court speed, um, than the clay speed. It's slightly different. One thing, it's got a little bit of give to it because it is made out of rubber, which is kind of nice for the old knees. So that was a plus for it. And um, I really wish everybody could have seen it. It really has held up well in Ocean City. It's a nice-looking product. And I think in terms of long-term life cycle costs, it's the best way to go, but we'll try to explain that in our recommendation. So that.
Charlie, I have a question for you. What kind, you mentioned the, uh, maintenance associated with, uh, the premier product, uh, and as well as with asphalt. But with the premier, what kind of maintenance does it require?
So it doesn't really re- require any maintenance to the product itself. It's more about color coding the courts every five to seven years, which means you go in there and you recolor the courts, re-put down the lines again. And if you do that every five to seven years, they'll give you the twenty-five-year warranty.
And do you have, did you, were you able to capture, uh, give us a, some kind of estimate of what that cost would be every five to seven years? Do you have any idea what that would be?
Yeah, I, actually, I do, but I can't think of it off the top of my head, but I can get that to you, and we'll put it into our recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is, is the, um, it, it's a good question that Tim's asking. Is it, uh, just, if you know, Charlie, is it, is it significantly higher than what it takes to just, um, deal with, with regular asphalt? I mean.
No, it's exactly the same.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the exact same color coding procedure and cost.
And is that, is that kind of, uh, uh, maintenance work something that our staff would be able to do, or is that something that you hire out, you contract out?
You hire that out. ATC, actually, ATC would do it.
I see. Okay, look forward to getting those numbers from you.
Oh, that's much like seal coating that's done, correct?
Yeah, you, you put down the green, like, the regular green color of a tennis court. And then you have, have to put the lines in after that dries and, and sets for several days. You gotta go back in and put in lines.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm thinking, you know, for budgeting purposes, this one forty-two, four fifteen, plus the fourteen would go into your budget. And, and then, um, Emery and Ellen Lorraine would handle how they put the seventy-three thousand five hundred grand into place.
Right.
Charlie, I guess we're not gonna get this money spent in FY twenty-one. It's gonna be an FY twenty-two item.
Yes. Yes, because one thing with the one thing with the premier court, they like it to be eighty degrees when they put it down for installation and, and its longevity. So, but it doesn't take long. It doesn't take long. It don't, it only takes a week to two weeks to get it down. So, you know, we're gonna run into some issues probably with people not being able to get onto the court when they want to get onto the court, but you know, after two or three weeks, it'll all be behind us.
Let you explain that to the pickleball.
As I said, I love you, man.
Yeah, Charlie, one more.
Risk of us having eighty-degree weather long enough to do it between now and the end of March?
You know, I think we're think, we're talking May earliest, probably June.
I think you're looking at June, July, yeah.
Yeah.
Charlie, one more real quick question. Do you know of any other location close to the Ocean City where this product has been used, this rubber product?
I'm not aware of any, Tim, but I'll ask the ATC Corp representative and see if he knows or he can tell us.
Appreciate that.
And Charlie, it's obviously cheap, like, to mix the two surfaces to have basketball be one surface and tennis, it's not less expensive because they have, in terms of the material they're bringing to site. Is that the case, or?
Well, it would be more expensive, I think, Andrew, because you have two different methodologies that one contractor.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't gain anything and call, and savings by going to a cheaper surface for basket, just for basketball?
No.
Okay.
No, and I actually liked it for the basketball, you know, being a basketball player, just because that give part of it, it's a little
Yeah.
better.
Right.
One thing that we, one thing that we noticed was in Ocean City, in the lane of, of the basketball courts, right underneath the basket, there was a little bit of, uh, separation in the, um, these are six-foot-wide rubber-coated panels that go down. There was a little bit of separation. We've since found out, Emery, that what happened was the fellow who runs Ocean City's Recreation Department wasn't notified by his crew members that that crack was beginning to appear. So it actually took him three years to get it on his budget, which they're gonna address it, uh, soon. But also, we found out from ATC that they've come up, they've solved that problem by reinforcing those areas in those heavy traffic um, places like underneath the basket or basketball courts. You probably don't have that quite as much on a tennis court or a pickleball court um, like you do on a basketball court that's real heavy with the jumping back up and down and a lot of people inside the lane.
Charlie, does this work also include a reworking of that stanchion, the basketball pole itself?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All new, yeah, all new poles, um, and, and backboards. We're gonna try and re, well, the way we expected the basketball, of the backboard, is to reuse the existing rims, which are relatively new.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's the tennis pickleball basketball court improvements project. And then we've talked about this one as well. This is the Rollins Room Restrooms Edition. Um, I have Morgan there. If there are technical questions, she's, she's available to be, uh, brought into the call if necessary. It's out for bid right now. The, the pre-bid meeting is next week, and the bids are due March thirtieth. Uh, GMB's construction cost estimate is one hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred and forty. And then we'll have eighty-five hundred dollars of construction phase fees. So the total budget estimate is two oh one eight forty, which is in line with what we've been talking. I think it's actually maybe a little bit less than what we've been talking about over the last couple capital project committee meetings.
Right.
So Charlie, remind me, I don't remember the exact numbers, but isn't this in the ballpark of what we ended up spending to, um, renovate the bathrooms at, at Beach One? I just, I, two hundred thousand. I, I think it was more. I think it was more because we were working with an existing structure, right?
Right, and we also, that was a much larger facility.
Yeah, it's bigger, it's bigger, yeah.
Thank you.
But this is not, this is not terribly out of line with what we ended up paying for the two new bathrooms that were completely rebuilt at Mary Vessels and Zwanneville Park.
Charlie, does this estimate, uh, include all the fixtures?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it, yep, it sure does. It's got two ADA accessible bathrooms, a custodial closet, a hallway with two drinking fountains, um, all the mechanical, electrical plumbing, um, extension of the sprinkler system because the fire marshal wants that. It's got doors for access into the Rollins Room, but also a door that'll be locked uh, when not necessary, but for any events in the, um, in the park.
Right, and, and it also includes the connection for water and sewer, is that correct?
Yes, it does. Yep, it does. We don't have to go through the existing facility for that now.
That's right.
The addition, we're actually going out in the parking lot, so it's a far less disturbing.
Right. It also includes a replacement of that current door that's there with a, with a storefront door, right, Charlie?
Yes, sure does, yes.
Charlie, as we go into, um, you know, trying to estimate construction costs, I'm always reminded that it's a, it's a guessing game. And we have to deal with the economy, which is very strong right now, at least for construction. Have, w- we're still waiting for the next recession so we can get a lot of cheap construction work done. It's been a while. But do you have any, uh, any feeling about whether we'll get? Well, does your estimate, um, take into account the, the high scarcity of construction resources?
Um, I will say that we added a ten percent contingency. Whether that's enough to cover that, what you're talking about, you know, I, I can't say, but.
Isn't that ten percent, isn't that designed for stuff that happens during the project more than, uh, bidding coming in higher?
No, on an architectural project like this, it's, it's a contingency to the original estimate. On our engineering projects, we do have itemized contingent bid items, and I think that's what you're thinking about.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
One thing, so one thing I, I do want to add is, I, I did share this with you via email previously. The hope is that, you know, part of the reason I asked Charlie to go ahead and get this out to bid so we can, um, open the bids um, in late March is so that we can award the bid at the April council meeting and then get started so that when we are ready to meet in person, we can have our meeting there where there's more room for some distancing. Um, you know, so hopefully, if, if we can get started by mid, mid to late April, we're, we're looking at, you know, maybe summer, having some of our meetings there.
Yeah, I think, didn't you estimate this to be about a hundred-day build project, Charlie?
Yes. I think we have a hundred and five days in there.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yes.
And, you know, I mean, obviously, the net effect is, it makes the community room much more usable as well as it addresses the need for our concerts in the park, having access to bathrooms at, at a closer location that are much more use, much more readily usable.
Charlie, I have a question for you. Uh, have you had, uh, how many, I don't know how you went about soliciting contractors to bid on this, uh, but have you had a, uh, do we have a reason to believe that there are in parties that are interested in this job? Multiple parties?
Yeah, I forgot to look at it, um, this week to see who's on our plan holders list.
We have our pre-bid meeting next Tuesday, so we'll have a much better sense.
So we'll have a really good idea then, who shows up for the pre-bid.
Okay, thank you.
Usually, on these projects, we usually get some bidders, Tim.
Yeah, and so you do that by, by calling out to people, or do you just send them, uh, RFPs? How do you do that?
So, by the public bidding requirements, the city is required to advertise in two different newspapers
Right.
for two weeks running, so we do that. But we also send the advertisement for bid to a, a list of contractors, which in this case was about ten different contractors, so they're aware of it, um, the project coming up out for bid.
Okay.
And those are ones that, you know, pretty much covers most of the contractors that we work with on these types of projects.
I see.
Yeah, and Ted Morgan has something in the chat about, uh, about interest by gen- but general contractors.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, lots of the general, just from, lots of interest from general contractors, so sounds to me like we could, we're gonna get good response here. It's a very nice project in that it's, it's very accessible. It's a clean, you know, there, I think that we would have had much less interest if we had gone through the building and tried to have a lot of renovation, uh, and access to sewer line. I think this is a very clean project. It's they're, they're not gonna, they're not working through a building, so I, I'd like to see that we've had good, strong interest. That should help. Thank you, Bonnie.
So for budgetary purposes, we're looking at two oh one eight forty. Anything else on this? Okay, so I'm gonna move, move into, um, street projects. And I've separated it into two discussions. One is the Monroe Railroad Corridor, uh, which we've talked about before. And then the other is the street maintenance sector of streets that we would look at doing. And it's really council's decision on which way to go or which direction to go, um, after you discuss it. But let me present first. We've been talking about upgrading the Monroe Railroad Corridor. You know, with new sidewalks, new streets, um, curb and gutter. Um, basically, this project required, these projects require full, you know, full rebuilds, other than Adams Avenue, which is, it is a full rebuild, but it's a small section of the street, not sidewalks or curbs and gutters. So in terms of the estimates, um, oh, and one thing I want to make sure I mentioned this at the last meeting is that these kinds of complete rebuilds don't fall into the category where we use our new, um, network analysis tool of maintenance. Um, the, these are beyond the scope of that, um, spreadsheet. Um, these are projects that, you know, that are standalone, one-off projects that need to be looked at because they have so many particular items that need to be addressed typically. So this is one outside, you know, it won't show up on our network analysis yet until we address it, and then we'll put it in there for future maintenance. Um, so I just want to summarize costs, um, for the Monroe Avenue Corridor, we're looking at four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Same for the Railroad Avenue from Monroe to Adams. Uh, recall that we've already done the Madison to, um, Monroe section when we did Madison Avenue several years ago. And then there's a small section of Adams Avenue that needs to, its pavement needs to be up, updated. You know, that might be something that you pull out, but it's, you know, it's not, relatively, it's not a big number compared to the other two street sections.
And you've got a big caveat in this, and that you say city only because, uh, there's no point in tackling this if we're not going to work in co- in, uh, collaboration with the BPW because of the in, in-ground utilities.
Correct, and I know, I've talked to Darren about that, and I know he's got money budgeted um, over the next five fiscal years for BPW participation in city street projects.
Charlie, what does the BPW need to do under these streets? Do they, are they replacing pipe, old pipe?
Monroe Avenue's a, a, a replacement of water and sewer. And they'll, they'll be stormwater piping improvements too, because the whole street will be slightly regraded, so we just gotta make sure we have catch basins and they'll have curb and gutter, so we'll have to have catch basins and piping for that. Railroad Avenue, not as much because there's already a sixteen-inch water main on Monroe Avenue. Um, and I believe that we haven't had any problems with the sewer. I have to double-check that. So the utility costs on railroad are far less than those on Monroe and. So the utility costs on Railroad are far less than those on Monroe, and nothing on Adams Avenue.
So does that mean that we can expect, oh, you've already said city only, but so is the total cost on Monroe higher than the total cost on Railroad because the BPW contribution will be greater?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes, well, if, and this is the one project you could probably break out, maybe in doing some phases. When I think about it, I don't know that I would want to do Monroe Avenue and leave that section of Railroad undone for another year, but you could go that direction. And Adams Avenue certainly could be done sometime in the future, if you did not want to put it in now.
Charlie, we're currently redoing the crosswalks at Adams and King's Highway now, so what's gonna be left? Obviously, you're putting in a new crosswalk, so you, and we did a lot of work at Railroad, so what is it, just the, you know, a couple hundred feet there?
Yes, I think it's less than 200, it's like 150 feet, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
It's just, it's just the paved surface, it's not, you know, curb and gutter or sidewalk or anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and by the way, those, those ramps have been installed now, they need to be finalized, but you can see them pretty clearly now.
I walked them.
That's a feel.
I walked them yesterday, they're pretty good. You just gotta wash the dirt off, you just gotta wash the dirt off of them, that's it.
Yeah, we'll get it all cleaned up, they're, they're still in the middle.
It looks good.
The one thing I would raise on the Monroe, just for consideration, is obviously once White's Pond Meadow comes in, that's gonna see a significant amount of traffic, I would imagine.
Right.
And we're talking about putting up a light there and what, how the city might contribute to that. I would just remind ourselves that be bear in mind the cost that we're expend, if we spend this, you know, when it comes time to negotiating that, that that's taken into consideration, because that neighborhood's gonna see a significant amount of traffic go through Monroe for sure.
Absolutely.
It's a great, it's a great point, Andrew, and Anne Marie and I met with Matt Carter from the University of Delaware Transportation Center to talk about that, like the change in traffic pattern. And what we found out from the intersection design that the White's Pond Meadow Developers Engineer has put together is that on full buildout of both White's Pond Meadows and the Gibbs Commercial site, which is the other side of Monroe Avenue extended, it's almost a three times increase of traffic on Monroe Avenue. Now, what that, I understand what full buildout means on White's Pond Meadows, because I've seen those plans, but I don't yet understand what that means on Gibbs Commercial. I don't know of any plan to change that right now, and the numbers that they're showing coming from there reflect like a development, not the strip shopping center type facility that's there now. But irregardless, it's, you know, probably two to three times as much traffic on that road.
Yeah, but we're talking about the signalization of Monroe at King, at Freeman Highway.
Yeah, so that's, that's been preliminarily designed and discussed with Del Dot and the RBA. And it requires actually a right turn lane from Monroe Avenue onto Freeman Highway. And I think you have an agenda item on Monday to discuss right-of-way dedication for that right turn lane.
Right.
So, it's gonna be a little bit different there. I think Councilperson Morgan may have brought up, last time we talked about this project, you know, just, we have to consider one-ways and two-way traffic on Monroe. And we had discussions like that with, with Matt Carter. And we, you know, I think these are things that can be fleshed out during the design development, but we've certainly got to leg up on some of our design thoughts regarding whether it's effective or not effective to go one way. In either direction, there's pluses and minuses either way, and, and two-way, you know, obviously has its advantages too.
Right.
Charlie, following up on Andrew's point, does all that work suggest that we should hold off on the Monroe section?
That's what I'm getting at, because especially if you have construction trucks through there, we don't know what's gonna go through there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's your call, that's for sure your call. I, I think there is some, I think there is some, some merit in doing, in holding off based on what you guys are saying. The one thing I think we should make a decision on pretty fast is whether we're gonna change it from two-way to one-way, because it might affect that intersection design.
The only thing I would say about the Monroe Avenue piece, it's from Railroad to King's Highway, is go walk it.
Yeah, it's fair.
It's all alligatored, and it's in six-inch little blocks or smaller, especially.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the second point is that, just when it comes time to, if we have to contribute towards that light, that this is, this needs to be taken into consideration as a significant amount for a municipality to spend on street, our streets that will get traffic, you know, whether the developer wants to contribute more, whatever it is, it's just.
I think Del Dot's already pushing the developer to contribute to that, as is the DRBA.
I haven't heard anything about city contribution to the light.
I haven't either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has DRBA agreed in principle to allowing that intersection to be signalized?
I think the discussion is right now that
Yeah.
they have agreed, but they want control of the light.
Okay, so, and I know it was floated by Del Dot several, sometime during the last 12 months, the idea that possibly DRBA would even assign Freeman Highway to Del Dot. That is, is that conversation like going forward as far as you know?
I'm not aware of it going back, going forward.
Okay, interesting.
They are putting, I know that they're also requiring the developer to put in bus stops on Freeman Highway at Monroe. Bus stops. There was a question raised as to where the bus stop should be on the Railroad Avenue side of Freeman Highway. Whether it should be right at the, at the intersection, or should it be, you know, a couple hundred feet further out? And so that's, there hasn't been a decision made that I'm aware of on that. Do you have anything further on that, Anne Marie?
No, but Charlie, Charlie did jump forward to another slide where we talked a little bit more about Monroe.
All right, great, there you go.
The only reason I did that was. Yeah, this is the preliminary design of the reworked intersection. You can see the right turn lane coming from Monroe onto Freeman. And then right turn lane onto, onto Monroe. I mean, I probably shouldn't say this in my role as the city's engineer, but I agree with Andrew that in the development agreement with White's Pond Meadows, maybe you could get a little something towards the Monroe Avenue rebuild, for the reasons he stated.
Well, the other thing is, in that agreement, the city could specify that construction vehicles accessing the site are not permitted to use.
We can do that, that's very easy. Most of those construction vehicles are not gonna come through the section of Monroe that we're talking about. They're gonna come up Savannah Road, or up King's Highway, and then use Freeman Highway to get where they're going.
That's what I'm thinking, Mayor. They're not gonna want to come down that road.
And I could.
If they have their staging area somewhere convenient to the White's Pond Meadows project, you know, they'll be coming and going from that staging area.
Exactly.
I would hope some of the contractors would, would leave there and go have lunch in our, in some of the businesses in town.
Yeah, that would, that would be wonderful. Or go over, or go out Freeman Highway and go have lunch on the beach.
Charlie, on the slide that you had up a minute ago, could you explain the, a little bit about the one, the one-way design that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at it different ways, right? You can look at it one way from King's Highway to Freeman Highway. But, you know, one of the negatives, if you go all the way with that one way, all the way to Freeman, is vehicles and people don't have access from Freeman to the library entrance or the trailhead entrance. And, you know, I don't like that, but, you know, we'd have to discuss that. And Bonnie, these are all things that we need to talk about. I haven't fleshed out any of this stuff yet. You know, if you go one way from Freeman to King's, there's issues for people that are on King's Highway that might live in White's Pond Meadows, there's issues for them getting back to White's Pond Meadows, because as we all know, as you move towards the fork in the road of Freeman and King's, up by the station, there's no real convenient way to go back towards the beach on Freeman Highway. You gotta make some random U-turns. So that's an issue, and that's one, you know, that's one of the things that came up when we started to talk about that. Another idea we had was one way from King's to the library trailhead entrance, which would allow for a two-way from Freeman to the li, to the library, which would get away from the problem that I just described, accessing the library trailhead entrance. But it's a strange, odd way of doing it, where you have Monroe Avenue part one-way, part two-way. So, the other thing about it is, and we haven't fully fleshed this out, is just like the people who live in that corridor, whether it's Monroe or Railroad, you know, we need to think about, with every one of these options, what is the effect on their traffic logistics? We need to think about that more. And then, you know, I tell you all that, and then I say to you, well, we probably should make a decision quickly on that, because they're gonna be probably getting started on that intersection revision. You know, sometime pretty relatively soon.
If you look at the intersection that's proposed down in the bottom, lower right-hand corner, it anticipates it remaining two-way.
It does, right now it does, yep.
And I think, Charlie, who came up with this idea of the one-way business? Is that a Del Dot idea?
No, we were asked to look into it, I think, at the last Capital Project Committee meeting. And, you know, we just started to think about it, Tim, yeah.
Tim, it was something that I suggested, I may not have been the only one, but it was an idea that was in my mind.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't remember where it came from, that's why I asked that question.
And this is gonna be, go ahead, Mayor.
I can tell you that this idea of a one-way partial was floated when Pilot Town Park was developed. That was supposed to be a one-way in, one-way, one-way out only. It was anticipated that everybody would use the Pilot Town Village to get into the, into the development. It never worked. People started using it as a two-way street immediately. And ultimately, the city revised that and made it a two-way entrance into Pilot Town Park. So, I, people are gonna, you know, I don't think a partial interpretation of a one-way would work in this situation.
As your, as your engineer, I prefer the two-way. It is, it is a little bit influenced by the count, Andrew, like you talked about, the increased car, so when I start looking at what that section would look like with two drive aisles, sidewalks on one or two sides, maybe a bike lane, you know, I have to keep in, I gotta keep in mind how, how that increase in traffic's gonna make its way through, what's a relatively narrow right-of-way.
Yeah, and the grades that you have to address, they are not inconsequential.
I think the grades, we can address. The things that we're gonna have to consider, and the council's gonna have to be involved with this probably, are that there, you know, there are some right-of-way infringements, that, you know, people have gotten used to, you know.
Some significant right-of-way infringements.
Yeah, they're not, they're not doing it in any mean or usurious way, it's just things that have happened over the years, and they've gotten used to, you know, utilizing it like that, that might change if we have to make this rehabilitation project happen.
Right, okay.
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 Thanks, Charlie, let's move on.
So, like I said, that was the Monroe Avenue corridor, and then this is the maintenance plan based on our new network analysis tool. When Emery and I were, and Eleanor and I were talking about it, we decided to come up with a $135,000 per year budget plan. If you recall from our previous discussions, every, you know, you have, when we did that project, we were able to identify what the average pavement condition index was across the whole city of Lewis. And right now, your average pavement condition index is 68, which is above what we like to see between 60 and 65. So I think I explained that at the last meeting, or maybe even two meetings ago. And you have a backlog right now of 3%. And backlog is defined by those streets with pavement condition indexes of less than 40. Remember that the good, a good average number is 60 to 65. When we begin to address some of these streets, they're gonna have pavement condition indexes of over 90. But across the whole city, an average of 60 to 65 is, is good and where you want to keep it. The backlog right now of streets that are less than 40 and thus require a full rebuild is 3%. Under to this $135,000 per year for five-year plan, it keeps the pavement condition index in this acceptable level of 64, slightly lower than where it is now, it's 68. But your backlog jumps up to 11%. That means that there's gonna be streets that are with pavement condition indexes of above 40 that would drop below 40. You know, it's this juggling act of what the city can afford versus keeping its streets in, in good condition. Or in condition where you're, you're not pushing that many streets into the backlog where you need to address them with more expensive rehabilitation methods. But when we looked at the $135,000 per year plan for the next five years, in the first two years, these are the streets that were recommended by our analysis. California Avenue out on the beachside and Ship Carpenter Square. And then in the second year, Fourth Street from Park Avenue to Chestnut, and Marina Drive from University Drive to Pilot Town. So just that first small block section from Pilot Town to where University Drive ties in. And you can see they're all, with the engineering fee estimate, they're all under the 135. The only little complication to this is, as we've talked several times before, many times before, a street like California Avenue on the beachside, the city may consider doing that with porous pavement. Which means it's not gonna be an edge mill and overlay inexpensive project at 7,680. Because when you build a porous street, it's a whole section, as we all know by now, of stone underneath and the porous asphalt on top. So it's significantly more expensive. And I guess we have to make a decision on, on, on that, of whether we want to do that or not, because I looked at the same exact scenario, $135,000 per year. And I took all the beachside streets and said, I'm gonna require those to have porous maintenance. And when I did that, it really didn't change the year one and year two projects, they're exactly the same except for California Avenue fell out.
Yeah, you know, Charlie, you have one other thing about California Avenue, and that is, I'm not sure we should be doing anything to California Avenue until the board officially decides what they're gonna do with replacing the water and sewer over there.
Okay.
On those streets, I, I just, I mean, it seems to me, I mean, we were put down porous pavement, and they're gonna come back through and run new infrastructure under them. It's lost.
Good point, yeah, good point.
I, I do think that typically, if they know we're gonna pave something, and I know there's that whole issue over there of, of do you do all, but, but they seem to, in the past, kind of shuffle their priorities around so that we can make sure that we get the under-graded infrastructure when we do the ride.
Yeah, well, the issue there is, they're, they've been debating whether they're gonna run a new line all the way out Cedar Avenue, or, or they're going to do it, you know, and then do the site, come back and do the, the connecting streets between Cedar and Bay, or whether they're gonna do it all at once, or how they're gonna do it. And until that answer, until that's really squarely answered, I really wonder if we should be doing much over on the beach. And until that answer, until that's really squarely answered, I really wonder if we should be doing much over on the beach.
Yeah, I, I think both of you are right, I, you know, Emery, you're correct. Uh, I think if the city were to decide to do something on California Avenue and the board wanted to replace that water main. Like I said before, they put money into their budget each year for the next five years to, um, participate in city-street projects. So it probably would fit into that budget amount. Um, but then Mayor, you're right too, cause it could be a much larger project than just, you know, one street for sure. The way that stands right now, you're probably aware is that there's gonna be a study made hopefully to, um. Uh, look at the cast iron and ductile iron water main pipes that are under the ground. And really determine which ones need to be replaced or not. So.
I have a question, I'd like to run past you. Uh, if we were to commit to doing the porous material for those streets. As if, I'm talking about the beach streets, the beachside streets. Would that be a way for the city to become more compliant with the excellent recharge area designation?
Certainly, yeah, I mean, that's what we're, you know, talking about at the Planning Commission Subcommittee level. Is to increase the amount of permeable, um, area and permeable. Infiltration practices associated with any development, so you would be doing that if, if you did that.
Right.
Porous asphalt. But the one thing is, one thing you have to understand is that it's about six times as expensive as a mill and overlay type street.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware that it's a lot more expensive, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
I, I'm also somewhat aware of the X, you know, what the state is requiring us as far as excellent recharge. But I understand that that's also been, uh, there's more to be learned about that, uh, but what the state is really requiring of us.
And one thing that the way we're running our new network analysis tool. And Bonnie, I know we've talked about this in the past, it doesn't really account for. Number of users per length of, you know, per foot of street. And I know we've had that discussion, not just with Bonnie, but across with the council about. Um, you know, is it really worth doing streets that have two or three homes on them or something like that?
Right.
It, what I'm giving you right now is more based on the condition of the street and addressing those ones. That might fall below the pavement condition index of forty. And trying to eliminate that from happening, so you don't have to do more in the future with them. When I got to thinking about it, I was thinking, okay, what, what does the budget need to decide? The budget needs to decide, you know, on the one-thirty-five number or something more.
Charlie, what, what, what other number did you look at?
Yeah, so I've looked at a lot of different numbers, Mayor, cause I like the tool, it's fun. But, um, let me look up what I got here.
Can I, I, I wanna explain why we use the one-thirty-five, um, for, for this presentation. Ellen Lorraine and Charlie and I were talking and the thought was that if we need to do this reconstruction that needs to happen. On Monroe Adams Railroad, that that's a big project. And while, and, and we may break that over a couple of years and while that's going on. We don't want everything else to fall that far behind, so we would look to fund the, the street maintenance on a lower amount. And then once that major rebuild is done, um, we would look to possibly increase it.
Okay, that's helpful information, thank you.
Can I just ask one question? Um, the biggest porous pavement project that I'm aware of on the beach was, of course, Bay Avenue. Have we, wha- what was the latest, um, uh, testing over there? I mean, is that, is that holding up all right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, um, Bonnie, you probably recall this. When we finished that project, when we tested it, it was averaging fifty inches per hour. Across the whole length of the Bay Avenue, that whole stretch from Savannah Road all the way out to the Yacht Club. We took, I don't know how many tests, fifteen, twenty tests across that length and they averaged out at fifty inches an hour. The design requirement is anything greater than two inches per hour. So we went back, I think it was three or four years later, probably around two thousand sixteen. And tested it again and it had dropped down to an average of about seventeen inches per hour, which wasn't unexpected. We expected that it would, you know, the performance would drop over time. Um, I haven't run a test lately, other than my eyeball test of always going out there under certain storm events. We have some what I call bird bath ponding, nothing gigantic. Um, but, you know, on the whole, the street drains pretty darn good. And we've actually improved our mix since that two thousand and ten design. And the improved mix we used on Bayview Avenue, if you go out on Bayview, even under the most intensive storms. It's dry as a bone. Um, so it's holding up, that's probably five years old now.
And are we, my recollection for both Bay and Bayview is that, um, there's, there's, there's a somewhat increased. Um, maintenance requirement, cause the porous pavement, particularly where there's all that blowing sand, should be vacuumed. Have we factored that in a little bit or since we have the vacuum, it doesn't matter?
I haven't factored it into the life cycle clause, I haven't done life cycle costs on it, but it is certainly a consideration. Um, as far as I know, the city's staying on top of the vacuum of the, of the porous streets.
When we looked at Bay Avenue initially, at vacuuming it, it was a thousand dollars per vacuuming. And so if we had, if we contracted it out and we estimated it would need to be done. Uh, they estimated it would need to be done four to five times a year. Uh, because, but then you have storm events which would cause it to be, need to be done more regularly. But we're, we're using the city vacuum, so.
Mayor, you had asked a question about other dollars. Yeah, so I looked at what it would take to keep the backlog on, under ten percent, which is sort of the rule of thumb that we use. And that ended up being a one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-dollar-per-year plan. Which would include the construction and the engineering costs.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so keep that in mind.
Okay, that's helpful information, thank you.
Here, here's one for you, is that the recommended plan by the. Uh, IMS, the company we use to develop the tool. They recommended a four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-dollar-per-year plan. That would move your average pavement condition index up from sixty-eight to seventy-two. And drop your backlog down from three percent to one-point-five percent.
Okay.
Yeah, so those are sort of the, the range of what you could do.
Okay, thank you. Four-thirty-two sounds very sweet. But.
Yeah, it's. You know, when I think about that number, I'm thinking if the city could. You know, if you had the wherewithal, and, and I know it's really tough. But if you had the wherewithal to do that in five years, then you're, you'd be really ahead of the game. Cause your backlog would be so low, you know?
Right.
But I know it's, you know, really expensive to do it too.
Well, but the, the need to do some major infrastructure improvement like Monroe and Railroad is, is certainly something that. Plays on, on all of this, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's what Emery was pointing out, is that if that project were to go forward, then you sort of have to fit this in where you can.
Got it.
Okay.
Charlie, what do you mean by analyze for porous pavement? To, to Tim's point, if we know for a fact that we need to have certain. Porous material over there on the beachside, like, what, what's the analysis gonna tell us?
Well, um, when did I say something about an analysis?
Right here, the note, certain beachside streets may be analyzed for porous paving.
That's what we're doing right now, that, the, the discussion we're having right now, I was just referring to like. We need to decide whether we wanna do porous paving on those streets or not.
There's not, you're not referring to a model that you're using, you're just saying this is something that needs to be discussed. Is it, is it in keeping with where we are as a community to, to, to use porous pavement is what you're saying?
It's like a policy state you've discussed.
Well, I'm, no, I'm not saying it's a policy statement from my perspective. But what I'm saying is, is that most of the streets in the city that are real candidates for porous paving are on the beachside. Because they have the underlying sandy soil conditions to work, make it work, so.
You have to do infiltration testing, right, to make sure that it.
We would, yeah, we would, like, the streets, I'm pretty certain the streets between Cedar and Bay are gonna be. Likely candidates that porous would work. I'm not as certain for those streets from Cedar to the canal side. Because the soil conditions change as you move towards the canal and the wetlands there. You have to have good underlying soil conditions, cause no matter how porous you make the street section. If it gets clogged up by clay or, you know, boggy type soils underneath, it won't work.
Great, so anytime you're doing this, you're gonna take samples and you're gonna look at the, the soil horizon and, and make a decision.
Yes, and we, you know, we've done enough over in that area, I haven't done every street, but we've done enough over there. That what I just said is pretty much the lay of the land in terms of porosity of the underlying soils.
Thanks. All right, you wanna go on, Charlie?
We can go on. So, um, Mayor, I put this project in.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a huge dollar amount. We've got a, so everybody's familiar with this, cause we've been over it a few times. But we've increased the number of spaces in the M and T lot from the, it's existing twenty-seven to thirty-three. Just by reconfiguring the striping, there's a lot of wasted space out there in terms of parking. Um, and we're gonna seal coat it and re-stripe it, put back down the parking bumpers, maybe there's a few new ones. There's some reflective bowlers just to keep it all safe as you travel around here. Um, and we got a price, got a couple of prices, but the lowest price we got was from Straight Line Solutions. For doing all that work at twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. Um, M and T had gotten some prices as well, Mayor, but you and I talked about them and they weren't apples to apples. And I still think this is the best way to go, to make sure we get all this work covered.
I think they're, they're indicated that they will be willing to contribute, uh, the one pri- the one price of the one contractor they had.
Yeah, what was it, five or six thousand dollars?
It's like fifty-two-hundred, fifty-three-hundred dollars.
Yeah, so that would be the M and T share of this twelve-thousand-six-thirty-nine. And then I don't know if the Hotel Rodney share has been identified or not.
Oh, well, I think they would, they would be mostly involved in landscaping and things like that. Because they're, we're not really changing anything before they were moving all the bins and all that.
Yeah.
Which was what was driving it. And M and T is in the process of striking their own, um, agreement with, with the Hotel Rodney.
So with that in mind, I think the city's probably looking at a maximum amount of like seventy-five-hundred dollars.
That's correct.
Towards this, uh, Straight Line Solution piece. But then, and I couldn't remember for the life of me and I couldn't find anything where I had it written down with that parking station cost. But was it around eight though?
I think it's between eight and nine, is that right, Emery?
What was that?
The parking, the parking, uh, station meter.
Yes. Between, it's, it's over eight thousand, but it's not nine, I can't remember the exact amount.
Don't I recall you saying Amber, I think it was you, Emery, who said you thought that it was gonna be difficult to even. Acquire one of those stations if we had to buy a brand-new one, so for the, isn't that right?
So we actually, we have one, I think, a, a lot of you know that there was one that, um, took a hit a few weeks ago out on the beach. And Dennis was able to, um, move forward and order the replacement, so may, it's possible, but it may not be. It, it, California, um, I think everybody knows, was very, very severely hit by the pandemic. So they had very long, very massive shutdowns and that, that had some shutdowns in the, um, in the manufacturing.
Chain.
Um, but I do believe that that, um, you know, it, it has improved. Um, and I know that it was not an issue with the one we had to order recently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And even if we did, or if, if there was a backlog, I think we talked about the idea that we could possibly move a station, uh, meter from the beach. To get it started, uh, so it would start, it would be up, assuming we went ahead with this. We could get it operational at the beginning of the meter season, or nearly the beginning of the meter season.
And to, and, you know, to that note, there's, just recall, there's eleven new city, dedicated city spaces. And one city dedicated ADA spaces that you'll be collecting revenue from. And then being able to use, utilize the eighteen M and T spaces at night or on the weekends. So there will, there will be some revenue created as well. It looks to me between the straight lines portion that the city would be responsible for. The payment station and the fees during construction for GMB, um, it's like.
Under twenty.
Eight, eighteen-thousand-five-hundred, yeah.
Under twenty, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions on the M and T lot? So we've been looking at the Otis Smith Parking Lot, um, over on the beachside. And, um, this was through the Downtown Parking Committee. And what we would do is create this parking lot with twenty really defined spaces. And it would look similar to what the Schley Avenue Parking Lot looks like right now with. Two to four inches of recycled concrete base underneath and the one to two inches of blue chipstone on top. And timber parking bumpers, no striping, um, we just show that for clarity purposes. And we got prices from a couple of different contractors and George and Lynch's price of twenty-two-thousand-eight-eighty-seven. Would be the way that we would go and then GMB's construction phase fees of twenty-five-hundred to create this parking lot here.
Charlie, Lynch's bid is the most competitive, or how was that one, uh, split forward?
Yeah, we got another price from Jerry's and it was, um, it was higher.
Wow.
Charlie, is, is the, uh, surface you're talking about, cannot be considered porous?
No, not porous, it does have a, a, um. An infiltration index of lower than regular asphalt paving. But certainly not in, in the vicinity of what is normally called porous. But it would be slightly better.
Thank you.
How, uh, how, you walk, how walker-friendly is that kind of surface, Charlie? In other words, if you had, if you park your car there and you're at the north end of that parking lot or west end. And had to walk towards Savannah Road across the length of that parking lot. Is that surface easily traversed?
I think so, yes. Yeah, I mean, it would be a different story if you were in a wheelchair.
It's not terribly dissimilar from the Canalfront Parking Lot or the Schley Avenue Parking Lot.
Yeah, the, the Canalfront Lot, it's exactly like the Canalfront Lot.
Okay, I'm more familiar with that one, okay, thank you.
I should've said that.
So, so two points, first of all, I'll raise, as I always do, concerns about ADA in this kind of surface. Uh, second, just, this, this will, the reconfiguration yields twenty parking spaces, how many are there right now?
It's kinda hard to say, cause it's, they're not defined at all, Bonnie, I've seen as many as seven or eight cars. And they park mostly up against this tree line right here.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so, so we're looking at a net of thirteen.
Yeah.
Twelve, thirteen, okay, good, thank you.
Yes, mhm.
And the, uh, the charging station stayed the, in the same location, correct?
Yeah, and that's a little, that's a little odd on our plan, I need to revise that. We, we would not be looking to relocate them, just, there's no reason to, we can just keep them where they are, yeah, work around them.
Okay.
If we wanted to add an ADA space, we could probably put asphalt right here. And maybe, we might lose one space because you have to have the, um, access aisle as well.
So Charlie, is your design now, I, I was thinking, your ingress and egress from this parking lot is from this, through the same point, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I was thinking that you had a design before that had one way in and a different way out, but I'm.
We had, we had concepts like that, but they had problems with keeping the fire lane open around this building and access to the hydrant. And just.
I see.
Building, yeah, and this really worked out, the most number of spaces best for the buck.
And, and that Charlie's, the body showing us shows the lot line that belongs to the city. So you see that the, the, the line uh comes out. And but on the other side, it's up against what we know as a daily market. It is. And it goes back and then it goes into that uh, that tax edge, basically.
Yeah, we talked to the fire marshal. This building's so old, they really didn't have any records of any review that they did. They like to keep a, a nice twenty foot wide fire lane. So we tried to accommodate that by keeping it this way.
I see.
Charlie, there was an option for porous pavers, right, which was up, up around a hundred and fifty K? Is that right?
Yeah, I think it was, if I recall, it was like a hundred and thirty thousand, Andrew.
Right, and so if we were going to do that, it would have to go out to, to sealed bed.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's it, that's Otis Smith. Um, this is the, we've been talking about this project for a number of years as well, replacing the beach parking lot lights. We're about ready to finalize our design. We have a meeting with Anne Marie next week to talk about some of the. Particulars of the lights and the banner arms and things like that. But we're estimating it in the three hundred ninety seven thousand dollar construction phase. Um, cost right now. And that's replacing twenty lights in both beach parking lot one and beach parking lot two. We've actually moved to where we're not utilizing those existing concrete foundation pedestals. Because they don't work well with. New lights and the kind of light that we want to use that's resilient to the saltwater. Uh, environment out there.
Right.
So we're actually replacing them and putting in new ones, probably anywhere from five to seven feet deep. These would stick up eighteen feet high. The pedestal would be similar to the way it is now, two foot six high up out of the ground. And then a fifteen to fifteen foot six high pole with a lamp on top of it.
Charlie, did you look at the uh, the lighting that was used to the library and the trailhead?
No, I haven't, no.
I mean, that obviously is more down directed, uh, protecting night and night kind of thing. It just seems to me like these are lovely and that they're decorative and all of that, but. Um, and it looks like they have a, a shield on them that would get directed as more down light than affecting the night sky, but. Those, those heads over at the library and trailhead are much more. Um, I would say slim line. Um, they may be, there may be something to look at.
Yeah, we'll look at it for sure.
I don't know what these, these costs per unit, but. Uh, that may be, bring this cost down a little bit.
Okay, we'll look at it and, you know. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, these are, this is just a picture. This is just a picture of what you could do, you know. I don't know that I really want arms out there. Uh, and the reason why is it gets so windy and it adds to the. It adds to the pressure on these poles, so, and then when you add more pressure on the poles, it increases. The need for a larger foundation, so we're more towards something like this. Maybe even just one or just the lamp, similar to what we're used to on Front Street and Second Street, just right on top of the pole.
Well, look at the ones at the trailhead and see.
Yeah, we will. Okay.
I think we should also be thinking about poles that are easy to lo- co-locate those uh. Five G units as well.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, good point.
Yeah.
Charlie, remind me, what is the um? What are we getting out of this? What's, uh, if we just uh continue to maintain our current poles? What is the downside?
Well, they're beginning to deteriorate and. It was just a gold, you know, I think they're pretty old. I, I don't really know exactly how old they are, but they're deteriorating. There's pieces falling off of them. They're weathering. Those, they're not a great. Material for this environment out there, so I think this was just a. A capital project to, to make the improvements and have something that would last another twenty five or forty years.
And, and there's one down at this point and. Because we've been looking at doing it, an overall replacement has not been. Replaced. I don't even know if, if, if it's possible to, to get that same pole to replace what's.
I think there actually are two down.
Two down, okay.
Uh, Charlie, yeah, for this project, are you having, are we having to replace? Any of the uh, of the wiring that goes from pole to pole to pole?
Yes, yes, since.
I'm sorry?
No, you're right. Yep, we are.
Okay, and so does that, are you anticipating that the? Parking surface will have to be cut for that, those new wires to be pulled, put in?
No, not for the wire, but, but for the new pedestals, we'll have to have. A ten by ten or a fifteen by fifteen patch cut in there for the new pedestals.
So for each pole, you would have a ten by ten minimum cut uh of the surface?
Yes.
But you, but you don't have to cut the surface to pu- pull the wire from pole to pole?
No, we can pull. Yes, there is existing conduit, yep.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll have to relocate the conduit to the new pedestal to bring it up through the middle of the new pedestal.
Right.
But that's all within that patch cut.
Right.
And then they, they can pu- they can pull the old wires out and put, pull the new ones in just from each end.
Right. Hopefully the conduit hasn't been crushed, huh?
Yes. I mean, we would, we would have known that probably by the light's not working or something.
Let me ask another really dumb question.
Thank you.
No, no, no.
I'm just kidding, come on.
Beyond mine. Sorry, Tim. Since people go to the beach for the sun and the view. Why do we need lights?
Some go at night to look at the stars.
Yeah.
Then that was block their view of the stars.
Right. I, I, I do think we should be sensitive to the dark sky issue.
Well, the, the other thing is maybe because it's an empty lot for us, for safety, but yeah, it's a, I mean, it's a good point you made.
I think it is a safety issue. There's a lot of, there, there are a fair number of people that go over there in the more, early morning hours. Uh, and also in the li- in, in the evening hours.
What for?
I don't know, Rob. I don't ask them. I have no idea. A lot of people go, a lot of people go just to, to look at, at the ocean or the water.
Well, if we're. Talking about uh lighting being needed at a parking lot for safety, which I think. That's one of the things that Andrew was referring to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm not sure that, and that's a liability concern, I realize.
Sure.
I'm not sure that we need twenty of.
Right.
Well, I have to say, one of the, I, I kind of agree with Rob, and one of the things I was thinking is, do we need? It, is what we really need for the uses down there? Uh, these big. Highlights, or do we need something more uh people sized? You know, in the nature of um lighting pathways as opposed to lighting the entire parking lot?
Okay. Yeah, I think.
That's again, something to Bonnie's point is that the library as well, they have those, they're about three feet high, right? They, they down light from there.
The ballards, ballard lights. Right.
Well, they also, they also have overhead lights for the parking areas.
That's correct.
The ballards along the walkway, but in the parking area, they have overhead lights.
That's right. Yep.
I feel like we don't have a good handle on. You know, how, how the parking lots use at night and if there is a true, real safety concern if we went. If we didn't have lights out there.
I have an idea.
You know, people go there, they watch the sunset. They'll, they'll stay there a little beyond the sunset, obvious.
Our people.
Start and they make their way back to their, to their cars. Then they go to Dairy Queen, maybe to have some ice cream, and then they come back to the parking lot. I mean, that's, that's sort of how they, you know, I've seen it used.
Okay. So they might be coming back in the parking lot at night.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we ask uh, uh Chief Spell? To see if there is in fact an element of, you know, a, if you will, a crime related element that we need to be concerned of. That would require us to illuminate that area at a higher lumen level than we otherwise would choose.
Yeah, there are people that walk their dogs there in the early morning when it's still dark. I'm out there myself walking and I do see it happen.
And you know, we're, uh, Mayor, I think we're soon going to have um. A new beach commissioner, beach one and two commissioner.
Exactly, yeah.
It might be something to ask.
That's another, good resource.
Good thinking, Rob. I think, you know, we do have, we do have a concern about vandalism when I would think when it comes to uh the restrooms. Uh, so lighting around the restrooms, whether it's on the building or station poles, I think would be a point that would have to be considered.
Sure, that makes sense.
We, we can always light the sides of the building if that's an issue, but.
Okay.
What, what time, what time are those, what time do we, do we uh lock those bathrooms?
I think we lock them at ten.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Uh, we can, we can, I don't think we're ready to move on this one, so let's, let's, you know, there's a lot more discovery.
Yeah, let's move on.
Well, I'm almost done.
Okay, you're almost off.
So the last one I want to talk about is the police department renovations. And where we left it the last time was to just enter into um. What we call architectural programming. And um schematic design phase and GMB had provided the city a proposal for twenty one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. To complete those two phases of the project. So the architectural programming phase. Includes meeting with the city, the police department and its representatives. To, you know. Flesh out what the goals are, what the needs are. And just have, you know, preliminary meetings to develop what the scope of work would be. And during that architectural programming, GMB would. Put together three different concepts. For the city's consideration. Once that, and I'm summarizing this quite a bit, but once all that work is done. Um, we would sit down with the city. And if we can come to an agreement on which concept to move forward with. We would put together schematic design documents, which would be more detailed. From the concepts that we previously developed. Uh, but not final design, so that you could see um what it's going to look like in a more detailed fashion and we'd also put together a construction cost estimates.
And have you uh, have you actually done, had meetings with the police department at this point in time? I'm.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure what is, are you, so is this a proposal that we? Would. Incur this expense of a twenty one thousand dollar consulting fee, or are you already engaged?
No, we are not, we have not engaged them for that yet. We discussed, if, if you recall last. Last Capital Projects meeting. We talked about um the design work and there were a lot of questions about break room and. You know, what's the long term, what's the short term, or is this space really? Um, enough for what we need for the long term? So that's when GMB said that they would get us the um programming, a, a, a proposal for the programming phase. Um, and this is the first time Capital Projects has met since that.
Okay, thank you, Amber, for that explanation.
And, and sort of tag along with that, you know, when we were talking about it at the last meeting. There's a pretty significant scope of work and we discussed about phasing it. So that would be part of what we do in, in our work here is to identify how we could phase the work over a number of fiscal years.
I'm going to express a concern that I have and uh. I, I'm s- semi-educated, okay? I'm not an expert on this, in this area. But uh, I would like to. I'd like to make sure that we are considering all options. And uh. If we are considering pouring any kind of capital into the police department facilities. And, and those options would include, yes, possibly renovating that uh existing space. But also exploring opportunities for uh relocating the police department to another building. Uh, that would be constructed to meet the requirements of a. Uh, twenty first century police department.
Okay, I think we need to, uh, let's get through this uh, design phase assessment and see where we are.
I mean, I guess to Tim's point, is that part of the long term, if we were to do a uh, design phase? You know, pay this fee, is that part of the consideration, or we would say would that add another? Ten K or whatever to, if we were to go that route, there's that, would that be included in this twenty K?
We'd have to identify where we would build it. We don't, we don't have the land to build it. You know, so that, there's a whole issue there to start with.
There, there's also, um, there's also organizational and management problems when you.
Exactly.
Break people out. Um, I mean, I, I get, I mean, I see, see what you're saying, Tim. I just, I don't know wh- wh- what land we'd put it on and it would cost a, a fortune. So I guess the first thing we have to figure out is. Can we, in, in the available space in City Hall, can we? Uh, create a, a twenty first century? Space. I mean, I, I.
I agree.
I think this is what, that's what this is all about, but. I don't, I mean, do you have any ideas on where we might? Put a new building?
I have some ideas, but I'm really not. You know, I, I, I don't know all the options. I haven't studied this well enough to know, uh, to be able to make that kind of proposal.
Okay.
But uh, I. What I'm looking at right now is the expense of twenty one thousand dollars for a, a proposal. Which might not really get us. Where we need to be. And uh, and I'm wondering if we need to have, maybe identify those options, identify. Uh, other locations uh before we actually incur this kind of expense from the, uh, from Charlie's firm.
Part of my problem, part of my concern about. Pushing. Stuff too far is that there's a need now, so part of it, it, and I, I absolutely hear what you're saying. But part of my concern is that it, it could take us another year to study this and, and. In that amount of time. We have, you know, nothing.
Right. I agree, Amber, and I guess what I. Okay, well, but see, what I don't really understand is. What have we identified as a scope of work for, to, to give to GMB? What are we asking them to actually? Consider when they are looking at the existing building and the existing. Uh, you know, the space and the, and the. It, the space, what are we asking them to really consider?
Charlie, do you want me to bring Morgan on to, to talk about that, or are you?
Yeah, yeah, why don't you do that? I, I know, Tim, that we've been through the police department a couple of times and. We have a really pretty good idea of what. All the goals and needs are in the space, but it really needs to be fleshed out more.
Right.
Um, so I feel like we have good background knowledge. To your point, I think Bonnie summarized it pretty well, is that the, the money you would spend here would. Tell you how feasible it is to utilize your existing space for a, a more modern facility and whether that, it would work or not.
Right.
Also, I might give you an idea of, what are you, what are you doing? Are you doing this for a ten year fix? Are you doing this for? A, a two and a half year fix?
Yeah, exactly.
I think you, you're going to have to do something to come up with an assessment and then, you know, if you feel like you, it's, it's too short of a fix to make, to do a decent return on the investment. You walk away from it and, and look elsewhere.
Right. That's right. And I guess what I don't under- what I. And I guess what I don't under, what I don't know right now is, you know, how, if the city has defined, or the Police Department for that matter, has defined what their, what their needs are, what their wants are, and been able to articulate that to, to Charlie's firm.
And, and the answer to that is yes, we have a pretty good list of items that we've discussed. You know, everything from architectural needs, space needs, mechanical, electrical, some drainage issues in the basement. We have a really good list, but this would, you know, this programming schematic design work would align all that into, you know, three concepts and construction cost estimates and looking at whether we can phase it in over time and whether it's feasible in the space at all.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Charlie, can I speak to that too?
I think Morgan's on the line. This is Morgan Helfrich. She's GMB's architect.
So the programming phase is a little different than just giving you a schematic design effort of what the space could be. What you really get out of a programming effort is what's called a functional area comparison. So you take their needs that they're telling that you, that they are wanting at a five-year, at a 10-year, and at a 20-year. And that tells you how much square footage they need and what they would like at each of those critical times. And then you look at what the, if the building that you have now, or their space that they have now, can accommodate that and the price that you would be pouring into to accommodate either at five, 10, or 20 years. And if that makes sense for you. So I completely agree with Tim. This is a pre-effort of actually doing anything to the building to see if it warrants getting even to doing anything for them and what their needs are now. The other part of this is to meet both with the city and the police because there seems to be some difference in once, you know, the Taj Mahal on one side to what's really, and, you know, can happen in a realistic manner in an existing facility. So we did look at the basement pretty critically. The locker rooms are pretty dire straits, you know, expansion down in that area. So there is, there's only so much you can do with that space. So that this effort really looks at what can you do with that space and how much time will that give you until they are busting at the seams and need something additional to that? And is it worth spending that money to do it? So it's not designed just for the sake of design. This is really the precursor, almost like a master planning effort in a building format, if that helps.
That helps a great deal. Thank you.
One of the things I mentioned the other day when we were with the police that we could get through this programming phase and it could be, these are the things that you do to get through the next five years, but we recommend a new facility. And if that, if, if, if we said, if Morgan told us today, you need a new facility, we're still five years away from that being in existence. So there are things that regardless of whether they're going to be there one year, five years, or 25 years, that we need to do to, to improve it. And there are things that regardless of who occupies the space, we're going to need to do. And I think from the programming, we can figure out which are the things that are worth doing versus which are the things that are not.
Right. Morgan, may I turn the director question to you? And my question is, are you able to tell us if we can use the building at this point in time for another five years?
I definitely think you can use it for another five years. I would be questioning if you could use it for another 10 or 20 years. I think that's the bigger question. So if this, part of this is also a compromise between the two, right? The police wants you to spend X amount of dollars to give them what they want now. You know, but you, you know, physically, you're responsible to look at this as well. If I'm not going to pour that amount of money into something for only five years. So the compromise is what are they going to agree to? Or what out of their list of needs are essential to get them to, you know, be okay with the next five years, if that makes more sense?
Yes, that does. I understand.
Amory, I have a question. Obviously, just what we talked about in the very beginning is, are consulting fees like this are okay under use for capital projects? So like, in a sense, you're not pouring concrete or things like that. It's, consulting fees are okay? Well, you're, I think you're on mute.
I am, sorry. Yes, that, that is okay under the transfer tax fund. You know, what they really, the planning, the capital planning is okay with what I think they really don't want a whole lot of is the up, just daily operations.
Right.
General government.
Thank you.
Okay, so this would draw against the transfer tax pool. Is that correct? All right.
I would, I would think it's like public safety related, but just one more.
Any public safety funds, you're right, Bonnie. Any, any public safety can go against it too. So it has.
Yeah, just one more pitch here. I mean, this is, this is the kind of thing that when we have a, a capital spending plan, you know, five, 10, 15 years, that we need to roll in there. We've also identified additional needs such as where we're going to store, you know, the very expensive equipment that we have to buy, like the trash trucks. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of space needs. There just isn't much space to be, for this to be figured out, so.
And that's why it's really important, I think, that we create that, what I will call a master plan, identify all these needs and maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of what we actually have with respect to the limited amount of space that we have to work from.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Instead of re-engineering it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think the question is, is trying to get for the, you know, for the citizens, trying to get the the best and most use out of the assets we have now.
Right.
You know, as, as, as city meetings shift over to the Rollins Center, I think that's going to free up some space. There's always the idea, assuming you could physically do it, of putting another story on City Hall. I mean, there's a lot to be thought through here. That, I mean, I know I've heard before that you can't do that, but I'm, I'm not sure. I've never seen that actually studied. But, you know, anyway, I'm just throwing out ideas and whether they're feasible or not, I have absolutely no idea. But, but until we know, until we have a, you know, a comprehensive idea of what our space needs are going to be, five, 10, 15 years.
Sure.
But in the meantime, we've got, we've got these employees over in the police section and I think we do need to give them some upgrades.
I agree 100% with that, Bonnie.
Yeah, one thing I did want to throw out there is when I did the tour of the space, there's an awful lot of space down there that is devoted to the gym equipment. And one thing that I think might, I don't know, and I don't know if this is something the police would be interested in at all. I mean, it's just an idea. So please just take it for that. But is, is whether instead of, instead of monopolizing all that space for that gym equipment, we should, we should think about, you know, trying to get a package of gym memberships or something like that for the officers.
They're willing to give up the entire gym.
Oh, good, because that's a lot of space down there.
And we are also storing, I don't know how many bicycles down there in the stairwells and in the basement also.
Yep, that would be gone too.
Yeah, that needs to be gone.
Feasibility study.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, we're staying off in the weeds here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right, Charlie, what else do you have for us?
That's it. That's everything.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Without the, without the Monroe project and without the Beach One and Two lighting, it looks to me like we're, the city's, what we would have to pay over and above the grants that we have and the contribution we might get from MNT. These projects total just shy of a half a million dollars. If you throw the other two in, you can add another million and a half dollars to it. So it's $2 million worth of projects that are sitting here that we've been talking about the last couple of hours. We've got some decisions here to make, obviously, a lot of.
There's more. That's all Charlie had.
I know, I'm just talking about capital projects related to Charlie, okay? So I'm just saying that what Charlie's been talking about to, with us here amounts to roughly, if we, if we said, run with all of it right now, we're looking at about $2 million. Okay, so then I think, thank you very much, Charlie and Morgan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Did you bring us a big piggy bank that we can work with?
You're going to make your fees.
I'm just interested to hang around and listen to Amory's gloom and doom presentation for the rest of it.
Okay, well, we've had a lot of comments in the, in the chat and I think we, the ones that needed immediate answer, we've answered or Amory's answered. And all of the comments that are in the chat will become part of the public record here. So I, you know, I want to make sure anybody who's typed in a question or raised their hand is recognized. So, Amory, you want to go on?
Yeah, so there, there were a few capital items that are not included in Charlie's presentation. One of those is the wayfinding and we had talked about doing the, the parking and pedestrian portion of that. Thought I printed it, but I didn't, so I need to pull that up.
It was parking and pedestrian?
The, the parking and pedestrian signage.
Yeah.
Can we get, I'm sorry, Amory, before we go back, on Charlie's slide, it did say for consideration for today. Were we, were you looking for a decision so that you could move forward on that engineering schematic?
Well, I, I feel, based on the discussion today, I feel that there was a general sense of the council that we need to move forward with that. If you want a motion, that's even better.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do you want to do that?
Wait, yeah, I mean, if that's.
You're talking about the PD department, the PD.
Yeah, that's what I was, so to move, that's what I'm, so do, I guess the question is, if we move forward on that, if you're, are you looking for us to move forward on that? And if so, is that something that we need to do so that we can make other decisions with, when it actually comes time to budget? Time, or is this the budget item that we're looking, only budget item we're talking about for the Police Department?
Well, so, Charlie, what, what's the length of time that it's going to take to do that study?
I think we had, let's see if I have it.
I have it in front of me somewhere, but I've got a lot of stuff in front of me.
Why, why would we, Andrew, just a friendly question. Why would we, we have to have this whole budget thing wrapped up in the next two weeks, right?
Well, Amory, Amory just indicated that based on our discussion, we were ready, she was under the impression that we were ready to move forward. So I'm, I guess the question is, are we looking to make a vote on it? Am I wrong in what you interpreted?
I think that it, yes, I mean, if you, if you, if you moved to move forward with this, then we will make sure that the funds are in the budget and the proposal, the signed proposal will go to Charlie and Morgan this afternoon.
This is for next year's budget. It's not going to go into effect until the first of April anyway.
Right. What is, what is being gained by this?
You can't spend money until the beginning of the fiscal year.
Not sure that's right, Mayor. I mean, if we authorize it and it comes out of capital projects.
So when Charlie builds it, we might be able to do it, yeah.
Yeah, and it would be minimal in, in the month of March.
And I'm sorry to go back on that, but just the slide said that you were looking for some kind of, it seemed like you were looking for a decision today. And I guess, is that what?
Try.
And is that necessary if we're talking about other budget, if we're going to consider other budget items? Do we need to have this plant, you know, mass, it's not a master plan as such, but a feasibility study, I guess?
Well, before we're going to, we're going to have to have this feasibility study before we authorize any other construction because I think the vibe in your question's got to be answered.
Right.
And so really what this is going to be, I think, is a, some, any results could be a proposal for some remodeling, some freshening up, if you will, of the Police Department. It's not going to be any kind of, of, you know, of serious upgrades to the building. We're not moving, we're not moving walls, we're putting paint, we're putting new floors down, we're changing the toilet, that kind of thing.
We're not doing any of that until this portion of it's done.
That's what I mean. I think there seems to be some urgency on that.
Okay.
I think Morgan can speak to it better than me, but I, Tim, I don't think that's quite correct. I think there could be some pretty significant changes to the interior just to accommodate even just their space needs.
Right.
So what we would come up with would be a three-tier offering based on what the five, 10-year and 20-year is showing and how much money you would want to spend to either refresh, give them something more in space that's like a medium level or more of a high level in that existing building. The high level that what they want is expansion of their locker rooms, which would be moving walls and fixtures and pretty high level. So, you know, that would be, you know, at the top of the list, you know, are there other things that are not at the top of the list? So once we get through the programming phase of what their needs are for five, 10, and 20 years out, we would then put that to paper and see what can be accommodated in the existing building to see what everyone would be satisfied with to spend monetarily to get you to that next level. So it's really a programming phase.
What Morgan was thinking in terms of timing, getting the work done.
You know, part of this actually includes a little bit of mechanical, believe it or not, because you know, Amory, that we're still waiting to smell the methane gas to trace that, to see what issue there is there. So there's some mechanical issues that need to be dealt with too. So I was thinking it would be about a three-month process for us to, to do all of the interviews with the police, to sit down with you guys and come up with those three-tier schematics with the cost estimate to each or preliminary and then review it with you and see what you guys want to do. We certainly can do it, you know, in any timeframe that you need if you're looking for it sooner, but that was just a ballpark.
Well, anything, anything you do after this feasibility study is going to have to come back for a modified, modification of the budget. If we, if it's any size. So, you know, what, if we want to approve this particular phase of it, this first assessment phase, we could do that, get it started. Looks to me like we're probably looking at sometime late June before we might have, you know, something that we could work with. And so that's the end of the first quarter. We could do a budget amendment at that point to consider any modifications or renovation we want to do.
I also did want to mention that, you know, EDIS has been pretty good with us, you know, based on the existing renovations that they've done to City Hall that, you know, they have definitely offered to, to look at it from a schematic level and help with pricing too. I think it's always helpful to get, you know, pricing from a general contractor at that point. So this gives you a stopgap to kind of look at those pricing efforts as well from a contractor perspective, you know, looking at, you know, more of the nitty-gritty.
Right.
Right.
So really, for all of these things that, that we've talked about, we're going to want some direction so that when we bring the budget to you for final markup next week, we have a sense. So, so for instance, Charlie presented the Monroe Adams Railroad. You know, do we want to put one of the space, one, one to two chunks? Because I do feel like Adams needs to be done with something else. One or two chunks of that into next year's budget and the Ship Carpenter, you know, being that, that one, because we said we're not going to get to California because of, you know, a number of reasons. Do we want, is that, you know, or does anybody have a real strong feeling about not including the Monroe stock? You know what I mean? I think we need, not necessarily a vote, but some feedback so that the, the version of the budget you get next week has numbers with the various projects. For instance, at this point, we will not put money in for the beach parking lot lighting, but we will be putting money in for the Rollins Restrooms.
Amory, my, I think that's a good way to approach it. I would, Ward Andrews thought that we might want to keep Monroe. I would, Ward Andrews thought that we might want to keep Monroe out of the current phase because of the construction that's coming. And did not just construction, but heavy, heavy use.
Okay, so let's go through these, let's go through these items that Charlie presented. We have the tennis courts, that's about an $82,000, $83,000 out of city budgets.
Those bids will be to you, am I going to get a bid recommendation in writing, Charlie, before Monday night? But that's on Monday's agenda.
Yep, can do, yep.
Okay, so that one we would, I'm assuming, given the fact we have a $73,500 grant to help pay defer that, that comes down to about $83,000.
Right, and that's already budgeted this year, so it will not be paid this year. So there will be
In next year.
A good chunk of money carrying forward that would go to reserves that you have to draw on for next year as well.
I think we had a positive conversation about the Rollins Restaurant. Sounds like we're going to nix the Monroe Avenue consideration for right now. If we're using the $135,000 for the overall street improvements, that really comes down to less than that. And what we're talking about is Ship Carpenter Square.
Well, so here's a question, if we're nixing Monroe.
Can you put something else in there?
Do we want to do Railroad and Adams? Finish that off, so the only piece that you have left is Monroe.
That would be, that would be a good, if we did Railroad, if we did the Adams piece and the Railroad up to, that, that would bring you, then that would put in $536,000 into your budget.
And this all, this all assumes that we can coordinate with the board, right?
No, there's nothing to be done on, but Charlie was saying there's nothing to be done on Adams or on the Railroad section.
Oh, okay, because Adams was done a couple of years ago. Okay, all right, I'm sorry, thank you.
Charlie, the improvements that are being anticipated at the intersection of Monroe and Freeman, do they extend back as far as Railroad?
Not to Railroad, no, but almost to the library parking lot entrance.
Okay, they do extend that far, okay. So, all right.
Which there really wouldn't be any reason to do to Railroad because the city just did that five years ago.
Right. We've done, we've done from the entrance to the library up to Railroad.
Correct.
Been redone.
That's correct. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be, but that was done before the traffic light and the connectivity to White's Pond was anticipated. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't having to undo some of that to accommodate, that's all.
So you want to put, do you want to put the Adams piece in and, and the Railroad piece? That would be the Railroad from Adams Railroad Avenue from Adams to Monroe. That's very low traffic volume. It's a narrow street that would somewhat be widened, would help some of the, some of the existing parking situations. It would certainly help the, it would certainly help the sidewalk on one side, the other side.
Yeah, it's terrible shape, yeah.
I think the, their use may go up once Monroe Avenue is signaled.
I think it will go up, that's why I'm saying if we get this much done, we're that much ahead of the game.
Yeah.
So if we put those two in, that's $536,000.
And then do you want to put Ship Carpenter?
Then we, I think you put Ship Carpenter, that was like 114?
Right.
Or 98, is that what it was, Charlie? 98 was just Ship Carpenter?
It was 114, including engineering fees.
Okay, so that's one
And we're not, there's no sidewalk being put in there, correct?
This is
No, it's just actually the street, there's no, nothing to the curb or anything.
Okay.
Hey, Charlie, just remind me, wasn't the, I thought that we had, we're looking at much higher estimates on Ship Carpenter before this, has it come down or am I just misremembering?
Yeah, because when we ran the van over it, that I didn't, actually lasered the existing section, they decided that it didn't need the full rebuild that I had
That's what I had remembered, thank you very much.
Okay.
Then we're at 114 there?
Yep. Okay, then the M&amp;T lot comes in with, with M&amp;T's contribution comes in at about, about 20, let's say. Including the meter.
City cost of 20K.
And that's a recoverable expense once the meters are in fact. The Otis Smith lot is 22, basically call it $23,000.
Plus engineering.
Beg your pardon?
Wasn't it, wasn't that plus engineering?
Yeah, 2,500, it's going to be 25K for that parking lot.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
About 2,500, okay.
Okay, so 25
No, but including, including GMV's fees, it's going to run it up to 25K.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So, okay, we leave off the beach one and two lighting situation and we consider the, the PD's 21 or 21,2, or 22,000 for the design phase. That seems to be where we are.
Right.
These now or just kind of putting outlines out there?
I beg your pardon?
Are we approving these projects or we're just putting in outlines for the budget that will later approve?
We will approve it, but these are the things we want them to put factor into the
Put them in and if it gives you anxiety
That's what I was going to say, I'm not prepared today.
Talk about that next week. Before, I don't, I want next week's draft to have that because then the following Monday.
Right, so of the, of the seven projects Charlie's presented, we're, we're dropping a couple, we're, we're pulling one back a bit, the Monroe Avenue back to a partial. And, and that's what they'll put into, reflected into the capital projects that Charlie worked with us on for the last couple of hours. Okay, so
Then we have wayfinding.
Now we have wayfinding.
So the parking and pedestrian signage is estimated at 101,7,000, or I'm sorry, 107,121 dollars.
Call it 108,000.
Right. So, you know, and Ellen Lorraine and I, you know, when we go back and do this, we can figure out what's best to put in MSA and, you know.
Sold on that one, Anne Marie. I'm not sold on the wayfinding, even the parking and pedestrian portion yet. A very high price tag for telling people, putting up signs to tell people where to park.
Okay. And again, this is based on a cost estimate, not a bid. The, we have two police vehicles replacement. So we have 70,000 that we have put in the transfer tax fund. 20,000 is what's above the, the county's grant match. You know, the county gives us 30 and then we pay 20 and then 50,000 for the second. Parking, we, we are going to need a vehicle for parking enforcement. If we're going to do increased enforcement on Cedar, we are looking at electric options on that.
Did you make any headway with the climate mayor's group in getting pricing?
Ellen Lorraine, we were looking at that, did you?
With who was that?
It's the Climate Mayors Association or something.
It's an organization I belong to that, they've got, they, they're doing a lot with EV vehicles. And I suggested that we look into it because they're, they've got like 200 municipalities are participating around the country.
I see.
Leasing or purchase plan.
Right, I understand, okay.
What you got, Ellen Lorraine?
We have, I've looked at the options available and I will reach out to them. I know we have a meeting with Enterprise next week as well, talking about electric.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then we've got, the, the leafback needs to be replaced, so we've got 102,000 in MSA right now. We, a trash truck, which has not yet been budgeted, we would do the lease on that.
And that's what, 40,000 a year?
The, the current, the most recent one was about 45,000 a year, but that's the automated truck. And I don't think we're looking at another automated, so it should be between 35 and 40.
And that's $40,000 a year to lease it, is that correct?
Yeah.
To lease the truck?
The cost of the vehicle is $220,000.
And we get that, we get the vehicle for what it's worth at the end of the seven-year lease term?
Yes.
And we have sold, we have sold other ones.
Yeah.
I think we have one that we're going to sell. What we heard from Rick was that it's not worth much.
It's not worth much at all, I think he told me, like pennies on the dollar.
Well, we
Yeah.
And Anne Marie, I'm sorry, but the vehicle for parking enforcement, I didn't hear what you'd budgeted for that.
25,000.
Thank you.
Now, we could end up doing it, you know, again, we have our, our call with Enterprise next week. We could end up doing it through the vehicle leasing like we do with our other vehicles. So it may not be 25,000 next year. So we, we'll have that ironed up by next, next week's version. For the maintenance department, a pickup truck, we have 60,000 in that.
Did you say six zero?
Yeah, I think that's coming in less, isn't that correct, Anne Marie?
It, it, I can't remember.
2354.
Oh, yeah, because that was, yes, because we were looking at the state contract and we were looking two different locations. Yes, you're right, it was 50-something now, right?
All right.
We have ventilation in the City Hall attic, which we're still waiting on a cost estimate. That may be, that may be small enough that it's not capital. We've got the storage pad for maintenance, but that's kind of in, in a holding pattern because of our disagreement with BPW. So that was about $60,000.
What was that?
The, with the storage pad and that's where we would keep like the leaves, the, you know, all of that stuff. Oh, the, the playground at George H.P. Smith Park was budgeted this year. It hasn't gotten done, so that'll be next year, that's in the transfer tax fund.
So that'll be carryover money?
Yes.
Is that, is that true for the, so there was 150K budgeted for main floor and basement renovations for police? So if in that study, it's determined that that will get us there, is that the money that's budgeted?
Well, so what, what you'll see is, I can't find my today's version of the budget under all my, I keep pulling out different packets of things and putting them on top of them. So if you go to your transfer tax fund page, which is
26?
Yes. You will see that our, in the expenses are actual for this fiscal year. 2.6 million, is that, is that right, Ellen Lorraine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But part of that is because things carried forward from last year, right?
Well, what we spent as of January 31st is 2.6 million. We're calling that 1.5 is from the Jones Farm purchase.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, that, that'll do it. So, so if you take the Jones Farm out of this, there, there's funds that were budgeted for this year that would move forward to next year. And typically, you know, for instance, the Phase 24 street project, that will not be fully spent this fiscal year. That'll have to move into next fiscal year. So where we budget money for this year and it, you know, in government budgeting, it disappears at the end of the fiscal year. The money's still there, it just goes into a reserve. So it, you know, you have that to pull on for, for future years, so. I don't know if that gives you any, any reassurance. But that's part of the, the, you know, number crunching that'll be done over the next week to figure out. And then you can look again on, on page 26. In our prior year, you know, basically based on prior year reserves.
Don't add me the, the way this is accounted for, I gather, is if we don't spend the money we budgeted, it goes into reserves and then we pull out from reserves. So we don't, we're not actually reserving separate little pots of money for each unspent item.
Right, right. Right, so right now, we've got $4 million in, in reserves in the various, if you look at the bottom of page 26.
Almost 150 million dollars.
Spent in one year goes into reserves.
And will you be prepared to tell us how much we've added to reserves in the last fiscal year and how much we propose to take out of them in the next, so that we have a sense whether we're depleting our reserves or not?
Yes, I hope to work on that, especially with February being done and we'll just have one month left in the fiscal year.
Great, thank you.
And I would say the one area where we could, where we're closer to depleting and depleting might be a strong word for it, but where we're taking money from prior year reserves is really the general capital projects.
And you'll explain that to us again, my annual explanation?
Something Charlie did not mention was the Schley Avenue lot in his presentation.
Oh, you did not, Charlie?
The what?
The Schley Avenue lot, you did not discuss that.
Good point.
Add 100,000 to his budget.
Yeah, I think it was around 100, I, I didn't know whether
I think it needs to be a discussion point, so.
Okay. Let me see if I can pull it up.
It was 95 and change.
It was 95, yeah.
Oh, and then the, the other thing that we did have on our list of capital purchases is the body cameras, but I think that the chief feels pretty confident that we'll be able to get state funding for body cameras.
There may even be federal funding for that.
So, we're, we're not going to budget for that unless we determine that we need to.
And the Schley Avenue lot, Charlie, I had thought there was some design thinking going into it. The design wasn't final, has that been worked out?
I think what we talked about was eliminating the bike, the bike parking out of that. And that's pretty much what we talked about eliminating out of that.
Okay, that makes sense.
We did, we did get a commitment or we got a verbal agreement from BPW that they had planned to put a fence up and they said they would be willing to put that much into it, whatever that amounts to. So that, that's probably in the neighborhood of 12,000 to 15,000 dollars.
Saving out of the 95 or down to the 95?
No, saving out of the 95.
And what is the purpose of the fence? Is it to separate the parking lot from their adjacent parcel?
It's actually two purposes, to separate exactly what you said, Tim, but also to put something on the Franklin Avenue side to buffer it from the street.
So, so a lot of this, Tim, it goes back to that, that the lot will be reoriented 90 degrees from the, so that it's against the entire frontage of, of Franklin to be a more compatible neighbor to the rest of the area surrounding. And then the, the laydown area used by BPW would be further away and the fence would provide screening.
Correct, and I seem to remember Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, I seem to remember you saying that you had met, had some conversations with BPW about a, I'll call it a master plan for the whole Schley Avenue.
They have not confirmed their willingness to participate in that yet, Tim. Yeah, we have talked about it, but they've not confirmed that.
Okay, but we, they haven't closed the door. Okay, but we, they haven't closed the door on that either, though, have they?
No.
No, okay.
We'll keep working on that.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
Well, ultimately, there's a lot of, there's a lot of underutilized space back there between Franklin and Washington.
Yeah.
Nice, or.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, and that gets to, you know, that's that master plan that I'm really a proponent of, that we really begin to maximize the utility of what spaces we, we have available to us that we own.
Well, this, the thing that, the thing that's really attractive, one of the things that's, of this design that Charlie came up with, Schley Avenue, is the pedestrian connection to, to the Schley Avenue lot.
Absolutely.
Being able to get downtown, putting in crosswalks and things like that.
Yeah, so you're saying there's going to be a fence line on the Franklin Avenue side rather than a hedgerow?
Well, it'd be probably vegetative.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, the, the fence would be on the opposite side of the lot.
Yeah.
Um, for the.
Towards the, towards the BPW stuff, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right, that's what I envisioned, right?
Charlie, you have anything to add to that?
Bernie?
I was asking Charlie. There you go, you got it. So you pulled back the, you pulled back the, we'll eliminate the bike parking for now. Those, yeah.
Charlie, you're on mute.
Sorry, yeah, so the fence is on this side.
Right.
The way I understand it, and then it's just landscaping on both sides. And although this was still a question of whether we were going to do it, would you guys have talked about that?
Sure, we'll do that one, but certainly we'll do the other.
Maybe, we, we talked about rebranding that one, Mayor, maybe we'll be.
Exactly.
Maybe BPW be a meterable, we'd call it the Press Lee Lot.
Oh. It's getting late, Andrew.
So, other than capital projects, again, just between now and, and next Thursday, Ellen Lorraine and I, and I emphasize Ellen Lorraine, will be working on putting the final touches on the last draft that you'll see before you see the, the one that you're going to be asked to approve. Are there any other things that need to be discussed? As you know, for staff, we've got a one point three percent increase that is consistent with the social security COLA. If, um, you know, if, if that's too much, too little, now would be a good time to give us that direction. You know, the other things we, we've gone through in pretty, pretty good detail. But if there's anything that stands out to you that you want us to, to look at.
Emery, I've mentioned that I'm, I'm not sold. Maybe the rest of the council is. I'm not sure we've had the discussion whether the hundred and seven thousand for signs telling you where to park is a good, is a good use of money. So I would have a question about that, but I don't know if others do too.
Anyone else want to jump in on that one?
I think that we need to, we need to talk about that a little bit more. We have to do something to increase the visibility, the accountability or the information as to where our parking is. We've, and whether it's this or not, I don't know. This is a program, as you know, has been implemented in Rehoboth and it's been implemented up and down Route One. And, you know, we could go another route. This is, this, this is a, a design that is consistent with what has been developed for Route One, bringing people into Lewis, into Rehoboth. And, you know, it has merit, but I think the other, probably the biggest issue is that, and Nancy Stacy did a fabulous job for the Downtown Parking Committee a year ago of showing just how poorly our, our parking is identified. And we get a lot of people roaming around now. I know the chamber and we, Emery is working on ways that there might be something on, on social media or on websites where people can better find parking. But there is a real need for us to be able to direct people.
Mayor, what about budgeting money of, of, about that scale? But not letting that just among ourselves be understood as necessarily signing off on the, on spending it on wayfinding?
Well, we could, we could do that and come back and look at the wayfinding a little further.
Yeah, I would, I would be comfortable with that.
Under our current agreement with Merge, one of the things that they're supposed to do is get the bid spec together.
Right.
Would it be better to look at the bid specs to, to determine? Because part of it isn't just the new signage, it's removing old signage. Um, I, and.
And is that bid spec going to get, kind of give us, not necessarily a map, but a listing of where they would put and what they would, and what they would take away?
Exactly.
That would be very helpful. I actually like Rob's idea as well. Budgeting an amount and then deciding later, okay, well, maybe half of it goes to signage and half of it goes to.
Right, well, and, and if it goes out to bid, none, none of it gets spent unless you guys have put the bet.
Right.
I, I have a question. Matt, let me ask you a question. I think you said, Emery, I wrote down that there was a one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollar hit for wayfinders, I think that was the figure.
Or the estimate.
Right. Yeah, right, and that estimate, that was provided by Merge, is that correct, by the contractor?
Yeah.
And do you know anything about how they collected that, that figure? Was that based on national averages for costs for materials?
I would say it's based on prior projects that they bid out that are similar. Kind of like when, when GMB gives us estimates, it's based on recent bids that they've done.
Yeah, and they, Merge is not a Delaware company, it's a company that's nationwide. So they're doing, they're doing these kinds of signage projects all over the country.
Yes, Bonnie. Can I just say, I, I agree with Rob on this one. I, I, I get the whole idea that, you know, the entire coast should have the same signage. But I, I just, in a town the size of Lewis and having seen what they have in Rehoboth, I, I'd really like to know what it would cost just to get some off-the-shelf, you know, green or blue or whatever color key parking signs as opposed to the, all the fancy doodads at the top and all of that. I, I just, it's an awful lot of money for, for a sign, tell you where to park.
We put the hundred and seven in and, and leave it as a placeholder and then we can decide we want to do it a different way once we get there. And maybe we spend less.
Well, and, and we could even, I mean, again, until we see the, the bid package, what Merge has shared with us to date has been the overall schematic. It hasn't been, this is where, so we, we could look at the bid package and you know, some of this stuff is kiosk. And you all may say, well, for the cost of this kiosk, not worth it. You, you may say.
Right.
There may be things, once we look at the bid package, that.
Yeah.
Kiosk. Can you get that, can you get that bid package by next week, Emery?
Uh, probably not, because he's going to have to put it together.
So we.
Well, I would just tell him if he doesn't get us the bid package, his chances of getting on the budget are zero.
Exactly.
See how quickly, see, see how quickly it takes him to get it together then.
Yeah, but the Rob's idea was we put the hundred and seven in the budget and we don't do anything with it until we get the bid package and look at it. Is that right, Rob? Okay.
You would put the full hundred and seven in?
That's what he just, he's shaking his head, yes.
I just want to make sure he's shaking his head. I thought I heard him say fifty percent. Someone said fifty percent. I thought maybe that was Andrew. Okay.
Well.
No, I think that was that we might spend fifty thousand, fifty percent of whatever we put in this pot.
I see. Okay, I got the fifty wrong.
We put the hundred and seven in the budget and then we'll make a determination once we see the bid package.
I mean, that's, I don't mean to be harsh with that guy, Emery, but he's had multiple presentations and in the last presentation, it was my understanding he was going to kind of deliver that presentation, which is for your money, this is what you would get, and it was still kind of conceptual and best practices and.
Right.
You know, we need to see a, a, a proposal.
Right, that, and I haven't seen that yet.
Well, he would not be doing the, the signage. He, he just gets, he just provides the, the bid specs and does the bidding work. And then he brings it back to us. So that's why, he's not, I mean, if, if we dropped it right now, he probably wouldn't care because he's gotten the bulk of, of what he was hired for.
Yeah, it's consulting fee, right?
We did, we did pay, what, thirty thousand dollars in consulting fees?
We haven't paid it all yet.
No, but we've paid most of it.
We're committed, though.
I don't even think it's most, I, I'm thinking it may be half.
And Emery, help me out, remind me, how is this, how would this be funded? Is this coming out of any special grants or anything else? Do we have any other revenue streams for this?
At this point, no. We could ask our legislators for community transportation funds.
And we could also use some MSA money for this.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I see. Do you know how Rehoboth funded theirs? Did the state legislators help participate in their, to offset their costs?
They did, they did.
How much did they? They didn't fund all of it.
They didn't fund all, no, because they don't get that much. They don't get enough to fund it all.
I mean, there's three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, they did the whole thing.
At what time?
And this is a point where Bonnie makes a good point. The signage I noticed in Rehoboth that's striking is just the simple blue P they put above their, their pay stations. Those, to me, are the most noticeable thing down there and they're effective.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing is that when people are, I mean, let's, visual signs are great, I'm not suggesting we don't need them. But, you know, this day and age when people are looking for something, they're on Google Maps.
Yeah.
So we have the, the D Preston Lee parking thing and we can get it on Google Maps. You know, that, that would, that probably solved the problem faster than anything else.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Amber, you have anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if there's anything else you want, you want to bring up regarding the budget for us to play with over the next sixteen, now's the time to tell us.
Well, I think, you know, we're going, we've, we've had.
I got, I got lots of ideas about additional revenue sources, but, you know.
Well, we have.
We have.
That, that is the next Friday discussion and.
Andrew, if, if you have ideas, put them in email and send them around so we can think about it.
I mean, if you want, if you want to, you know, test the water now and then.
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll put, to Bonnie's point, I'll put it together and, you know.
It's so, it, yeah, and the sooner you could provide something to us, the, the easier it is to, for us to, to play around with numbers and figure out how much something might spring in.
I mean, I, I'd be curious about one number. I'd be curious if we did a little better than the cost of, just a cost of living increase for our employees. We're, we're at what, one point three?
One point three.
If, I would like to see the numbers if we went to one point seven. I just want to see what it would cost.
So half a percentage point, basically.
And, you know, maybe paid out as bonus as opposed to salary increase. I, I'd just be curious to know what the numbers are. I'm not advocating for it because I don't know what it would cost, but I'd just like to see it.
Emery, do we have a bonus pool in the budget?
We do not, and this is our first.
There's a line item, though, isn't there?
Well, that's our Christmas. Yeah, that's.
It's a Christmas bonus, that's.
That everybody gets the same amount. We don't have a performance bonus.
Yeah. That has nothing to do with.
Well, but part of the reason we haven't had a performance bonus program is because we haven't really had fully formed annual performance appraisal approach and I believe.
We have a good rating system.
And I think you've been, I don't know that we're ready to do that this year. I don't think we are, but.
This is our first.
Been working towards.
I, I think this is definitely a kick the tire year on it. And, um, because it, it, I know as I went through and was doing the evaluation, there were some things where I was like, well, that seems repetitive of that. Or I wish we had asked this, so I, I, you know, my plan is to bring the managers back and say, okay, what worked, what didn't, how can we tweak it?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'm, what's really going through my mind here is the, the extra efforts of the staff. I mean, we canceled all the hiring. People had to really pitch in, people had to be flexible with telework and all that. And the extra efforts of the staff really solved the city's financial issues in the past year. So I was thinking if we could do something a little better than having people tread water with a cola, it might be a nice gesture.
Where's my.
Again, I don't know what the numbers are.
Where's the councilperson's raise?
Yeah.
That, that is actually in the charter. It has to come from us, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Anybody want to come forward with that councilperson's raise?
Yeah, or I'd just like to offset some of the costs associated with being the councilperson.
Uh, there's, there's one thing I would ask you to think about between now and next week and perhaps share some ideas. And that is, if we, when we ask Ernie and Steve for contributions for CTF money, what do we want them to ask them to fund?
Well, remember, we're supposed to set, we, we made it, yeah, years ago, we would kind of, sort of put, rank our asks.
Right. That's why I'm saying, let's think about it between now and next week, because I've already been asked. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, how much is it typically?
It doesn't, there's not. He's got to remember, he's got three hundred thousand dollars. He's got to divide this over each of them at three hundred thousand. They've got to divide over their district. At one time, Representative Smick gave Savannah Place ninety-six thousand dollars to help with that rebuild of the road. Okay, generally speaking, we've had a variety of things funded. We've had some part, some street improvements, some crosswalk improvements. We've had Moby Mats. I, I know that there's been a specific request made already, not through us, but for Moby Mats at, at Roosevelt Inlet.
Well, it turns out that, I mean, if it turns out that we are indeed responsible for paying for trail improvements or updates, maybe that's one way, place to go, because that's certainly an area that gets usage dropped from county residents and would be an easy sell, I would think.
Well, don't forget, we can ask whatever. It has to be of interest to them, too.
Right, right. And we often manage um, CTF funding projects that are not things that were the city's idea. They're, they're things that come through constituents and, and they work through us.
I mean, for instance, a, a good one to, two good illustrations. One was the dog park that we got fifty thousand dollars from Senator Lopez. The other one was the lighting at the Little League Field. That was largely funded by Senator Lopez.
And we've done UTVs for the fire department so that they can respond to emergencies on the trails.
So, how many, how many municipalities, just municipalities compete for these dollars, is that correct?
All municipalities.
No, it can be, they can be anywhere in the state. Um, so it, it, the legislators have the flexibility to use them where they see fit. They can be used on subdivision streets, they can be used on trails as long as it fits the, the definition. So if it's not in a municipality, Del Bot manages the grant. If it's in a municipality, even if it's not the municipality's project, municipality manages the grant.
So the money comes to the city of Lewis in our case and then we, the city in turn administers the money? Is that what you're saying?
The city spends the money and then the city gets reimbursed by the state.
Oh, oh, I see.
We never, we never actually get, you know, the money until it's done. We get reimbursed for the expenditure.
But they've already made a commitment that they will make the reimbursement, is that correct?
Yeah, we can't spend the money until the money, until they've made, if we can't get retroactively reimbursed for something we did.
Okay.
I, I do know, so there is the request already in and it's, and Ernie has already committed to providing Moby Mats at Roosevelt Inlet.
Right.
So beyond that, I'm, we need to come up with our list that we can then submit to them.
Okay. All right.
In, in that regard, could, could, we, we've talked about a number of places today where CTF funding would be possible. Emery, I don't know if you kept notes, but could you put that list together? So, okay.
I didn't write it down. Did you write anything down? I can watch the video.
Oh, God, I wouldn't make you do that.
I can, I can fast forward. I can, I can fast forward.
Yeah, I would.
Say I had to watch for something and I figured out you can turn it on like super slow or super fast. So I was listening to the, um, the video on two times and everybody sounded just like they were talking really fast.
Well, if, 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 if you could, I'm, I'm not gonna ask you to watch four hours of this meeting or three hours of this meeting, but if, if you would, um, just notionally put together a list of things that are in the budget that would be eligible for CTF, that'd be very helpful.
Okay.
Well, certainly our parking lot improvements are eligible. So, you know, the, the, the piece over by the Daily Market, the Franklin.
The, the parking signs are probably eligible.
They are, they are. So I mean, uh, you know, you've got the Schley Avenue lot, you've got the, the Daily Market lot, the M and T lot probably.
M and T would not, they.
It's private property.
They can only fund on private property if there's like this long-term lease, which we wouldn't.
But you've got those two lots and you certainly, um, and you certainly have the signage thing, those are three things.
Just, just think transportation.
Yep. Well, obviously that's been stretched a bit when you think about lighting and other things.
Well, wait, but I think we talked about lighting would, like down on the beach would be eligible, right?
Right. Um, we use, the canal launch was one of the things that was funded.
Right.
Did, I can't remember, was, uh, CTF, no, that was private property, never mind, I'm misremembering.
Hey, Ted, real quickly, what, uh, party asked for the funding for the mats that are gonna be put down at Roosevelt Inlet?
I think there've been a couple of people that have asked, uh, but also I think, uh, Matt Carter, uh, reached out directly.
I think it was a matching thing with that as well, like he agreed, if he was able to come up with ten K, then, then Ernie would give him ten K, something like that.
Oh, I see.
Not terribly expensive, they're about three thousand dollars apiece.
The goal is to improve, um, accessibility, people who.
Sure, I understand, I just didn't know how that worked, that's all.
Yeah, Ernie has funded, um, the majority of our Moby Mats at Beach One. Uh, we did, we funded all the ones that are on the Dune Crossings off of Bay Avenue. Uh, but in the one, the, the Moby Mats that are out of Beach One were funded by Ernie.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else to bring forward? We've been here a long time today, guys. We've even lost most of our audience.
We've driven them to their early cocktails.
Yeah.
Is that a glass of wine I see in front of you, Bonnie?
Not I.
That's why I said it, so, okay. All right, how about a motion to adjourn? We're gonna be back together on Monday, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Bye bye, thank you.